Okay, I don't know what's needed to order. Officially, maritime is six oh five. Please rise for the invocation of the police in Texas.
Father, thank you for bringing us together tonight as one community. We ask you to help us in our decision making, get through these tough decisions with courage in our hearts and love in our hearts, making the best decisions be possible to bring our city together and forward into the future in your way. Thank you for your love and your care, Lord. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Texas pledge. Out of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one state indivisible. Welcome, everybody. She appreciates you coming out this evening. I don't believe we had anybody sign up for visitors or citizens long. However, I do want to make just a real short statement. Once again, I'm glad you're here to listen and participate. For those of you who may be here regarding the tax rate, the tax issue that we're about to talk about and what have you, regardless of what you may have seen, we are not going to set a tax rate tonight. Okay, we still have plenty of time for that and there'll probably be several more questions sessions before we do that. Okay? And also, this panel has not already decided to raise taxes. I'm not saying it won't happen, can't lie to you, but everything is in the works. Just last week, we got a veramist work with from accounting. So we have a lot on work and a lot of things to do. All right. And no public recognition. Okay. No employee recognition. All right. We'll move to the agenda item number six. I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, did he?
It's okay. I'd like to recognize and thank Dora and her staff for everything they have done in the last couple of weeks, especially with the hardship of what's going on in the office of no air conditioning and all of that. So I want to recognize and thank them for all that.
Well, we definitely appreciate all the hard work they do for sure. Thank you very much. Public works also and everyone else, police force, all the good folks we have that work with us. Okay, anyone else? All right, agenda item number six. Consider approval of council minutes, regular council meeting minutes from July 18th, 2023, special council meeting minutes from July 25th, 2023, special council meeting August 1st, 2023, and special council meeting August 8th, 2023. The floor is over.
I do want to let you know that on for July the 18th, there was corrections to the all the other pages from the first page. It had special instead of regular and it was corrected.
I just don't have time since yesterday to review it. Can I make a motion to table this until next Tuesday to give it further time?
You could probably always bring that back, couldn't you not?
Yeah. I didn't take the whole thing if you... Actually, I'm trying to read it over.
Yeah, well, thank you. If you have discrepancy, always bring it back in the next week.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any more comments? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion, I think so. Meeting minutes were seven eighteen, seven twenty-five, eight one, and eight eight.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a motion from the council member Randall to approve minutes as mentioned. Second. Second by Flipper, Flipper Wayland. We have a motion in second. All in favor?
All right.
Motion passes. We move on to item, agenda item number seven. Consider an active call in Medina County appraisal districts' audits. What are we doing here, Dora?
This is the audit that y'all get every year for y'all to review and to accept. I know it was presented to y'all back in June, June 30th, 2022, and council accepted it at that time, the audit.
Well, the last one was June 2022.
Uh huh, yeah. They have to present it every year.
Well, I personally didn't see too much go on myself, but I could have much chance actually investigating and get further into it. But did you review it? Do you have any issues with it?
Well, it's like the same, same as last year, but if y'all do have questions, y'all don't have to accept it. We could have Jeanette come to the next meeting if y'all want her to go into it in more detail. We can do that.
Could I ask a member of the public to maybe clarify if they have the information?
That's what?
A member of the public to clarify to provide some detail on this if they have the information?
They wouldn't have it yet.
As far as things to look for, if they've got the experience with it. You've got a former county commissioner in the audience. Honestly, I have no idea what I'm looking at.
It's going down here.
Is there anything I should be looking at in this? I've got CPA around the eyes, I actually don't know what to look at.
Yeah, I've got to say later, I was with you. I got this on Friday and so...
So do you want, y'all want to table it to have Jeanette come to the next meeting?
I'd at least like to ask for more time just to be a little informed.
I have one question before we table. Well, I don't know if anybody has the answer to this. On page seven, it...
His husband's asleep there.
Yes, he didn't know the answer to this either. It says that at the end of 2022, the districts had a liability for vacation pay of 13.3,000. What exactly does that mean?
It's, the audit should do the same thing when they do our audit. They have to record the vacation as a liability because let's just say that all the employees decided to leave, that would be a liability to the city, but they have to pay out.
Great. Awesome. Thank you.
Stacy, what did your husband think about this?
I didn't ask his opinion on this. I asked his opinion on other things, but not this specifically.
Okay.
Which I can share that later.
I just don't know, I don't know if to ask.
Yeah. Just from what I was looking through here, and again, with my minimal, minimal understanding of a lot of these things, let me see, the total net was 946,000. Their expenses was 1.15 million with a net position increase of 299,641.54, which is 46.3%, which seemed like a lot to me, but again, I don't, I don't know if that's normal or not. So I think bringing Jeanette in next week would, would be a very good idea to...
She did, we did send her the agenda, but I didn't receive the call that she wasn't going to need her. So, I mean, we can reach out to her and let her know that y'all want her for the next meeting.
Everything to me seemed pretty straightforward and with my, you know, basic understanding of things. I just had a question about that, that one thing, but yeah, those were the numbers that stuck out, stuck out to me. Okay. Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to accept the Medina County appraisal districts' audit.
Okay, then motion on the floor. Miss Byron, Mrs. Byron, to accept the Medina County appraisal districts' audits.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Randy. Any further discussion? All in favor?
No.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, agenda item number eight. Consider an active call on police departments' plan of action regarding safety at City Hall. Chris, I'm here.
Yes, sir.
Hopefully, not the kind of issue where you're about this one.
Okay, so typically on any given, oh, now? Okay. So typically on any given morning, we have the two morning shifts that overlap. So at the time of this incident, we did have two officers out. We just did not have somebody at the building. What we've put into action since then is to coordinate with admin staff to make sure if somebody's not there that they're aware of it and can take the proper precautions.
I think we need to backtrack a little bit and talk about this.
Oh, okay. So...
It would actually be good to clarify with brother and for council what happened that just today and your district from the police department.
Sure.
To avoid any further rumors and...
Oh, there's been plenty on this side.
You know how the gossip does. So one of the reasons why I wanted to do this was just have you describe the official report.
Sure. So that morning, we had a lady and young man that live in Atososa, Texas. They were on their way to Mexico via State Highway 132. At some point, the mother and son had an exchange of, a heated exchange of words. She pulled into City Hall parking lot where he promptly got out carrying a 22 single-action rifle. He then proceeded to walk around the building. He walked down Herring. He walked down Bowman. There was a couple of people that saw him in the field in the area behind QT. Within minutes of the call, we had a huge saturation of law enforcement. We had DPS that I've never seen before that showed up. We had several county units show up. Now again, there wasn't a crime that was committed. It's not against the law to walk around with a rifle, unfortunately. However, because of the argument that he had, we just wanted to make sure that he was in the right frame of mind to be carrying a rifle around town. He was caught later in the day, much later in the day, outside the city. The sheriff's office located him and he did go to the hospital for, for medical reasons to be evaluated medically. So there, there was some rumors about, you know, that the man was at Walmart. That never happened. We didn't, we had no crime that occurred at Walmart that day. So I know that one's kind of a big, a big ticket thing. I've been asked numerous times about, you know, the, the shooting. The first thing that Channel Five had asked me was about the mass shooting at Walmart. Like, wow. So how things get twisted around, just like you said, is very, very, you know, untrue.
That went around rather quickly.
Yes, sir. It sure did. We did, you know, of course, we had a call that the man was at Walmart. We did go and investigate and found out that that wasn't true at all. We did have some participation from local citizens that happened to be armed at that location also. That was interesting for a minute, but everything worked out well. Nobody was injured. Overall, like I said, getting back to typically, you know, in the morning shift like that, we have overlap with two. This time, we didn't have somebody in the office. We had two that were out and two that were able to respond within minutes. From there, it was, you know, simple coordination with Dora and the sheriff's office to get people where they needed to go. So what, one of the other things we plan to do, we do have our own in-house active shooter instructor. We're going to be doing some training with the city office as well, just to get them a little more up to date on things.
I'm just gonna, that would be my suggestion because the school district has, you know, guardians, you don't know what teachers carrying what. Same thing with girls here, man, or whoever's working in that, in that city office, you know, at least armed, because something like this actually really happens. I think too that, you know how we have the Amber Alert? I think the city needs to get together, have their own little alert system, not for something small like the bender bender, even like that, more like just what happened with City Hall if it happened at Walmart or it happened at, that's not super reasonable with, booking, booking or anywhere else. I think we need to look at something like that.
We have iNFO.
Right, and that message was put out on iNFO.
Okay. So it just needs to be used earlier than the date because it was used.
It was used, but however, we were out looking for the person as opposed to, you know, waiting to type up what happened to send out. But we can, we can coordinate that a little better. I've got an iPad that I can actually do that out in the field now, so that shouldn't be an issue.
I think one of the issues was as far, as far as City Hall goes, that we didn't have a police officer at City Hall for a particular amount of time. I think they're running out of patrol and this or that. Couple of council votes are talking about it and it just seems that due to the nature of the world these days, like I mentioned, sometimes you get angry questions there amongst the City Hall, whether it be building builds, cut offs, whatever happens.
We get calls for that.
Right, right. So, you know, I think, I think the, I think to do it, you'd make sure we always have an officer at City Hall as well. I don't know, is that possible?
Unfortunately, no.
Sure.
Only in the instance that something else bigger occurs outside of the building. Yes.
That was the concern.
But predominantly, we do always have somebody at City Hall. Just worked out that it didn't happen that day.
I have a question based off of my question there. Is there any policy that currently the city's got from turning fire on?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so it's an option then.
I mean, we are a constitutional carry state, so...
Okay. Any questions, guys? Chris, thanks a lot.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Okay.
All right. Agenda item number nine. Consider an active call on no video, photo, or other remote traffic enforcement technology may be used to alleviate any fee, fine, or other costs. I request that by Councilman Josh Reteau, District Four.
So is, I was pointing in the right direction since I requested that. I'm going to make a motion, we take no action on this item. 2019 Texas Transportation Code, Chapter 707, that's prohibited the use of those any further in cities and it's only the existing contracts that are allowed to expire.
Okay, you're referring to the cameras and so's at intersections of state highways?
Well, state highways can be usable or swap.
Okay.
The club we have at four corners, right here, the dog camera.
Right, that's not public enforcement. I mean, like, yeah, and so, yeah, this may already have that.
Okay, so this is, this is a good call?
Yep.
Okay. We need to take no action to wipe off each other.
I mean, if he wants it, if he doesn't want it on the agenda...
I made a motion to take no action, so is that good?
We have a motion to take no action, this agenda item by Councilmember Bishu. Seconded. Seconded by Councilmember Bitchell. All approved?
Aye.
Aye. Consider an active call on airport advisory report. The Chairman of Airport Board has flyers this evening to speak to us. Happy to get it.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. On July 12th of this year, the Airport Advisory Board met with two representatives from Tech Dot. Our hope was that Tech Dot could provide some assistance in determining the best use of our hangars, the recently acquired hangars, and suggestions on how to maximize the utilization of the entire airport. Unfortunately, they didn't have any magic bullet that would bring the airport profitable in the immediate future. They did make several observations. One of them that really struck on me was that the, our airport is in competition with, with the other airports in, in the neighborhood, specifically Castroville and Pleasant. They're only about 20, 30 miles apart and it's the pilot's choice as to where, whether he, where he would want to land. And in fact, you know, even if they were doing business in Divine, they could land at Pleasant or Castroville and easily get here. The, the, our, our airport has some disadvantages. First off, we have limited parking. We don't have any restrooms, no air-conditioned lounge for pilots to flight plan, and no access to either courtesy car or rent car. They noted that our six parking spots are occupied, if they're occupied, it becomes very difficult for any other plane to maneuver to and from our, our fuel tanks. Presently, there's no good access, again, Tech Dot's comment, there's no good access between the north and south areas of our airport. Tech Dot indicated that a parallel taxiway runway connecting the two areas would greatly help future development. They suggested that Divine have Tech Dot update the airport layout plan to provide a blueprint for the future. This would cost about $150,000, but the city would only pay 10%. They also showed the city how to get reimbursed for money already spent on airport expenses. I believe that this was limited to about $15,000. The problem is, to cure these deficiencies would require mega bucks and a lot of time and with no lawful guarantee of long-term profitability. I've discussed this with other members of the advisory board and unfortunately, we don't have a magic bullet either. One suggestion made by Tech Dot was to establish a large hangar number 10 as sort of a community hangar where several individual airplanes would be stored in a kind of, you know, open area. The problem with this is for this to work, the city would have to have the equipment and the personnel to move planes in and out. I used to keep an airplane up at San Antonio International under similar circumstances and when I wanted to use the airplane, I'd have to call in advance and they would get somebody to move airplanes around and get mine out for me. Seems to be a little impractical here. The other issue with that would be because it would be community parking as such, the rate would be cheaper than we're presently charging for our T-hangers. And I see a possibility of our existing tenants renting a T-hanger for, what, $175, $200, saying, oh wait, I'll just go over to this community hangar and so we don't gain anything, we actually lose something. While the board doesn't have any recommendations, my personal suggestion is that we get the vacant hangars in good enough conditions so that the city can begin marketing them. Mostly this means cleanup and repairs.
Would you add more policy or deduce? I'll try to answer any questions.
Thanks, Seth. We, yeah, we definitely have a cloud of hands on our hands with this airport. As you mentioned, chances are that it'll be profitable and as it is right now, it's an extremely serious dent in our budget. I did some mathematical calculations earlier this week and we essentially said it was about $60,000 a year out there as it is right now when you include the debt service, if not more. So there is no easy route. Like you said, I've spoken with Tech Dot and so forth, they didn't have any solutions for us either. Other than to throw a lot of money at it, it would seem to try and make it profitable sometime in the near future, even if you can't guarantee that you're going to...
Yeah, unfortunately, I think, you know, the Tech Dot suggestions are more of a long-term budget item for the future years. I mean, you know, building a taxiway just so that we can access, you know, the hangars that Joey's building down there and Dallas, Colin wants to build down there, you know, it's not something that we can do next month. It's going to require, I guess, grants and, you know, a lot of planning. So, you know, the best hope is to clean up what we've got and try to market it. One of my suggestions on marketing is there's a website called tradaplane.com. It used to be a print magazine that all, you know, mostly the, the big trade magazine for buying and selling airplanes. And I looked at that website recently and it had really nice sections on real estate and, you know, and airplanes, of course, but, and it wasn't very expensive, it was like $138 a month or something, but you could, you could put pictures of your hangars on there and, you know, describe, you know, the city and the advantages, you know, we're only a half hour from San Antonio, et cetera, et cetera. And I think, you know, if we put some effort to it, we can make a really nice looking ad and then try to get some response.
What was that website again?
Tradaplane.
Tradaplane, okay.
In 10 minutes, everybody can go home.
I have a couple of questions. So would you recommend more parking then out of the airport?
It would sure be nice, but we, we really don't have any room for more parking. Now let me see if I can get Vicky, the airport manager, to address that. We really don't have any more room for more parking, do we?
We know, so it's landlocked.
Yeah, we're, you know, we're landlocked. Which is what Tech Dot said is, you know, we need to build a parallel runway to get to the, to the north side of the runway where we've got plenty of room for parking and some of that is actually paved and, you know, could readily be used. And it would also benefit, you know, Joey's hangar and, you know, any other, that whole area is undeveloped, but it's not a short-term solution.
Okay. And as far as fixing up the, the vacant hangars that we have, eight and 10, is that just kind of like basic, you know, fixing up the outside of the building, adding in electricity? But is there anything in particular that would need to be put in there for, I know nothing about planes or flights or anything like that, so as somebody who does, is there anything in particular that we would need to add to?
I haven't been in that hangar for, for quite a while, but Vicky, can you address the condition of...
The condition is bad, of course, but it can be fixed up. Basically, doors, tin, some windows, and the electricity. That, in one of the offices, it's really bad and really needs to be dressed up, but otherwise, your basic version of everything and then let it go, you know, as you progress, when you get tenants, you can address what they need. But basically, it's like Cap and I had talked, it's like a rent house. You need to take care of what needs, the water, the electrical, and then whatever the building needs, then try to let somebody come in and see what you can do.
Yeah, my personal opinion is, you know, if we went in cosmetically and repaired and cleaned up the hangars, we could technically defer doing the electrical until we got a customer in and we could say, you know, we will fit the electrical to whatever you want. And I almost hate to bring this up, but I understand that the electrical on the other hangars, the T-hangers that the city owns, is pretty neat to be brought up the code too.
So you're referring to, okay, city using the main on hangars eight, 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 and 10, they would pay about $850,000 for those. And then we leave on these two private hangars, which are about $500,000. So the two private hangars also need some upgrades and repairs?
Yes.
Yes. Especially the electrical. And, and I understand, you know, if you ever wanted to bring city water up there, that the, you know, the, the water system wouldn't handle that correctly.
Was that back to the cell price and the body, do you upgrade some stuff?
The hangars you're talking about right now, eight and 10?
No, five and seven, I think it is?
Well, we're, we're actually talking about the, the original hangar that was bought from Belindeo. What hangar is that?
It's five and six.
Five and six.
Oh, the previous?
The previous.
Yeah, five and six.
The first one.
Yeah, the first one and then the one that was bought secondly, which is hangar six.
Well, it was, yeah, five and six and then seven.
And seven.
Okay. So essentially, we just kept driving, that's like a really bad situation.
Are we able to ask you folks to get some pricing on the bare minimum upgrades to make the rent lower or do we have to, what do we have to do here if that happens to get some ideas across?
I don't have any idea. I, I, I'm not qualified. Uh, I, I, I'm not qualified to go in and say, you know, "Guys, for ten thousand dollars, we can fix this."
What I'm saying to get quotes from, I don't know who fixes hangars.
Do you have an estimation of who we can approach?
No, I don't.
Okay.
So number eight hangar is the first one that you drive in with the two parking spots right, by the, by the tank?
Mm-hmm.
That's eight, right?
Yeah.
And then ten's the larger one?
Yes.
Correct.
Now, what you're saying is like, it's better to gut everything and start all over again, correct?
No.
No?
No, I don't think-
But Jordan, that ten is real good, too.
Yeah.
I mean, the outside of them looks pretty good, and, you know, structurally, as far as I'm concerned, and I think Vicky too, structurally, you know, the hangars are fine. It's inside, uh, you know, probably, you know, the wooden partitions and the offices, and I think there's a kind of a second story in there, and, uh, we just, first off, my understanding is, you know, that hall pretty much needs to be gutted, just a thorough cleaning like you would do if you bought a rent house, if the tenants have trash, you know, you go in and replace the carpet and that kind of thing, but, you know, I don't think structurally there's anything wrong with the hangars.
So I suppose at least the city needs to go in, review everything out there again and so forth, and give price tag, and of course, we have, we do have reinvestment, but fourteen thousand three hundred refund from Techscout, it might be able to be applied to some of that, but either way, it's still gonna be more money just to be able to use them, so I think, uh, it's okay. Go ahead, Vicky.
Could we have Dora, or whoever, work with Vicky, just to get a couple contractors out there to say, "We need these holes and these ones," because remember, there were holes involved, I mean, outside walls, I don't have any inside. The outside walls need repair. See what it would take to get the doors to fit, be able to be closed, not fall off when we blow on them, and the little things like Cap was saying, cosmetically, so that they're rentable. Could we not have them just go get us a couple quotes? Then we know what we're working with versus sitting there going, "I don't know."
Well, that's why we're starting this process right now, so that sounds about original, it's anything. Uh, and of course, we're tied into the budget, that's why I came tonight, so we can tie into our budget helps, right? So, uh, and see what we're gonna need out there.
Well, I think, I think that's great of you for us, to be neat and actually go ahead and you participate in the, in the tech also, but it's been a long time since I've ever worked with, I'm great, uh, you're, we're concerned, they can give a shot.
Well, the only thing too, like you said, was at least getting into some kind of decent shape. For folks that haven't seen it, that, those hangars are miserable condition, uh, so, but at least we can probably somehow get it upgraded to where we get it and that the magazine can market it a little bit with some decent looking photos and so forth, and I think Vicky had a great idea, uh, and if, uh, if somebody's interested, you know, we may need to upgrade further for, for their needs and so forth, and we can keep them at least for a while, so.
Would you suggest, or not suggest, eight, eight, at hangar this, now, that's the only one that doesn't even have any baby wars, right? No, which one?
Uh, eight.
Yeah, select the first one that you drive, right, you're driving to your, to your left.
Yeah, the one, the one that looks, the one that looks like a seal.
Yes.
Okay.
Now, what if we just, because you were talking about a little commuting center for, for airplanes, did, did you mention something like that?
Yeah.
Like restrooms and all that stuff, heck, what if we just tore that down and put an armenium or something like that if we, if we had money in the budget to do that? Because you have, of course, you're gonna have to drill a, for a well, a water well, because divine water's not gonna get out there pretty soon. I mean, because you've got the concrete foundation, you can still, you can still, uh, minor into it and put water down and everything else, you can fit that down there.
So we'd be making the money off that, yeah?
Yeah. We've got the office in ten though.
There is a big office in ten.
And education, bathroom, everything there.
It's upstairs?
Yeah.
Well, there is a corner of the, of your walking it, it's far left side corner, and it can be a lounge.
Yeah, because it doesn't have to be that big, that large, you can still have, still have parking.
Yeah, I'd hate to knock down that, I don't know, just to see.
Actually, sit twenty degrees and sixty thousand dollars a month, huh?
No, not a month, a, a year, it needs, it needs to get something on the side, something on the side.
I don't have a, I don't have a, I don't have a, that's one of the, there are a lot of them.
Okay. Very good.
Well, I guess, uh, we need to borrow our ideas and so forth, and present it to Vicky and you, and we can proceed with that. Since we're giving you advice, perhaps we can get some kind of numbers, uh, that we can play in our advisory before we do.
That's good.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd be very glad to hear your help on that, on your research.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you, you too. Moving on, the jet I had numbered, uh, considering I had a bond, uh, golf course issues, uh, first couple of things I want to talk about was, you know, you got your faces all in the clubhouse, we've got the car, okay? With, uh, the cooling.
So, I'm on record, this is Brian Navarro, we're with Divine, but I do have a presentation for you guys.
Great.
Would you repeat it? Would you repeat? Yeah, yeah, I was hearing that. Updates on the clubhouse.
Yeah.
So updates on the clubhouse are, um, you were asking for a, some kind of a quote on an exhaust fan for that ice machine room, and I, I got that. Uh, Mr. Navarro, Dustin Navarro, said that that shouldn't cost more than eight hundred bucks to put an exhaust fan in the ceiling with a temperature control that would probably be running all the time, but it would suck the hot air out of there into the attic, and then the two they've already put up there would be removing it from the attic.
So you're gonna need ductwork, or you just?
No, it goes right up through the, right, doesn't need any ductwork at all. So that's the update I have there. Uh, if I may, I'll, I'll start on my presentation.
Sure.
Okay, so we have had the golf course now for seventeen months, um, and, and what I have here is the presentation, uh, on, on the presentation is, it's kind of a spreadsheet I put together last night with the help of my wife, that shows that we had put in about a hundred and thirty-six thousand four hundred, but I was just, um, we were thinking back there a minute ago, what did we miss? We know we missed some big stuff, and we did spend fifteen thousand dollars on tree trimming by professional tree trimmers, since the city asked us not to be cutting big limbs and stuff, so we, we hired professional tree trimmers to come in there and do that. We did spend fifteen thousand, so when you add that in there, you know, we've, we've put in about a hundred and fifty-one thousand, or are responsible for a hundred and fifty-one thousand. The lease on the equipment was, came to, uh, my attention that the city may be paying for lease equipment, that y'all had John Deere equipment back from when the city had it, or when Shannon Rangel had the course?
Yeah, we're not paying for-
Okay, I was gonna say, because right after we took over, we bought that lease out, and so we owned that equipment, lock, stock, and barrel.
Yeah, I think when the auditors were, were here auditing us, um, we reached out, I think it was to Jay, um, and they took it off the books.
Okay, yeah, they'll make sure y'all weren't paying for something you're not supposed to be paying for. We, uh, and then at that point, we realized that we only had one of each piece of machinery, and they're getting a little bit old, so they're possibly gonna be breaking down, so we had to have a backup for each one of those. So that's what all these, uh, these items are. Z-track mower is, uh, is a, basically a zero-turn lawnmower for golf courses. You can go buy a zero-turn down here at Tractor Supply for three, four thousand dollars, but when you need one for a golf course, it's four times as much. Looking at all of that, you can, you can see all of it that we've actually done, and then the only thing that, and we've asked for a little money that would help when we first started, with some, uh, the well going out, that we had to repair for twenty-two thousand dollars, and the electric boxes that blew up and had to be replaced, back to a new, different code, cost forty-five hundred dollars, and the city did step up and, and give us six thousand dollars to help out with that at the time. Uh, it has come to our attention that Harold Chemical Company has a outstanding balance of twenty-eight thousand dollars, to which we think it's thirteen thousand of it is the city's responsibility, and fifteen thousand is, is the Greggo's responsibility. We have no clue where these chemicals are, but we did receive a, a bill for this a while back, and we said, "Hey, this, uh, we haven't bought anything from you guys, we were about to," and they said, "Well, don't try, because we're not gonna deliver there till this is paid for." So it just, you know, I wanna look into that, because we, we don't have any of that, of those chemicals, and we didn't authorize any of this, this was previous to us.
So there's an outstanding debt?
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight thousand dollars to Harold Chemical Company.
So on your inventory sheet, the contractor does have fertilizer, stand up, that was there when we took over?
Well, the, the Harrows, the Chemical Company is saying that they, uh, delivered the chemical, and I think it was like on a consignment type basis, is it was used, then they paid for it.
Gotcha.
That was the agreement between SG Management and Harrows. It's to my understanding that whenever SG Management, uh, left in February twenty-eighth, the twenty-two, I believe, the time between that day and, uh, Divine Golf Group taking over, there were some pre-emergents that had to be put down and, uh, different things that needed to put down for the spring and the summer to come, which totaled about fifteen thousand that was, that was put down before we took over, so.
Okay.
That's what we're being told by Harrows and then, and then the existing fifteen thousand. Like I said, we, we haven't used any other chemicals, uh, to my knowledge, uh.
When we do, we get them from Helen, uh, which is over in Honda.
Okay.
And I've actually drove there and picked them up myself and brought them back and unloaded them, so I know, I've been there twice, we haven't bought a thing from Harold.
Yeah, Harrows has a, uh, they have a lot of what we need, we just can't, they won't deliver it to us because of that outstanding balance.
So, so in between the time that SG turned in their keys, did you guys pick up, the city was doing some maintenance on the course?
Uh, Nick Miller, the, the superintendent at the time, was doing maintenance, and I believe the city hired him maybe for a month or so. Uh, don't know what, how all that worked out, but it was, it was in the interim.
That's who we hired to, well, and another guy, I forget the other guy's name.
I, I don't know.
And then they were supposed to, well, I'm, sorry, know that, remember that.
Yeah.
I'd have to go back to my notes, so.
Well, uh, well, they can't hold you respond, right?
No, no, they're, they're not trying to.
Well, because we're, we operate out of the same address, uh, they're, they're basically not shipping us anything, uh, until that outstanding.
Do y'all have any invoices from them? Showing that, that y'all could give us a copy so we can-
Aubrey may have some, um, I can get with her, um, this evening when we get back and-
And we certainly call them and say, "Hey, send us a, send us an invoice of what's supposed to be owed him," you know? That's not an issue at all. So we, uh, and then we wanted to just call to your attention the, the several different promotional things we've done up there, not including, not limited to just a national night out. We have DISA, the Divine Youth, uh, Kids Turn, uh, Kids Golf, we have a hundred and eight kids this last year sign up, and I believe that runs two months in a row.
Right.
Um, that we, we put on tournaments for those kids and everything else, the Easter egg hunts we've done twice, Fourth of July celebrations with, uh, water slides and all this. Uh, the, DISA's the only one that I know of that they charge the kids, but they pay us. All this other stuff that we're doing is, is just, um-
Out of our pocket.
Yeah, we're out of our pocket and, and charity type stuff. We have, um, some upcoming scholarships, I know we raised, uh, ten thousand dollars for the, the Coach Sanchez scholarship for his daughter, and then we have some more coming up with Samantha Boobinghausen and, and Shannon Rangel. We have helped the Education Foundation raise eighty thousand dollars, uh, and the United Way, we helped another company raise forty thousand dollars for the United Way, so we're trying to do our part in, in making sure this is a family-oriented place and, and it, it's worth coming to the golf course. We just, uh, we'd like to be in the budget for the new pump, in case that thing goes out, or to go ahead and get the new pump, and then we can rebuild the old one, have a backup. Uh, we wanna be in the budget for, for that forty thousand dollars. I know that when we signed the contracts and everything, the, the, everybody that was on the board at that time, and I know there are some new people, but if, if, I remember them saying, "If y'all ever need anything from us, just come ask us, you know, we're here to help you." So now we're here asking and to see if, uh, if we can get in the budget for that, for that money to, to repair that well. I do wanna just let you know, and I think you already know this, if that well goes out, you're gonna lose the whole backside of the golf course, because with this type of heat and the fact that we're watering twice to three times a day, we have got, we have one employee just running around and turning water on, just to keep it wet, you know, because a hundred and four, hundred and five will bang the golf course in a heartbeat. So, that's what, that's what we're asking. Do y'all have any questions for us?
Well, that respect on that, I've got all the records to say, say several times already, well, I think you guys are doing an incredible job out there, especially considering everything you got to work with, no rain for two years, things going on and so forth, uh, and it's, it's always been my position that, that, that we do need to support you. Uh, in the last few years, it's been a controversial issue here, uh, not you, okay, but the golf course itself for the last several years, and the city, the city has put out a ton of money because they decided that the community needs that golf course, uh, so we have, it is what it is, we have to make it work.
Sure.
Okay, and we can't, I mean, we need to make it work, and, and I think we should be willing to make it work and do everything we possibly can. My personal opinion, once again, is my personal opinion, I still believe that the city should be responsible for its own property, uh, and things it owns.
Sure.
Uh, for, for many reasons, uh, to protect its investment, to make sure that it's maintained and kept, uh, and so forth. That's my position. So, uh, I guess when we go into, uh, rent budget down for the time passed, uh, you know, we'll have to discuss it and toss it around and see what the rest of the council is willing to do.
We're asking for forty thousand dollars in the budget to pay for a well.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay. And then, uh, okay, you guys have any questions as far as updates and so forth, from this guy?
Yes.
Okay, Josh.
All right, uh, I appreciate all, uh, the work you folks are doing on this. Uh, this is the definition of serious community service here, the amount of investment in our pockets into it. So last minute, I asked you to investigate a water tie-in, she, uh, told you, I'd tell you afterwards, slipped my mind, and then, uh, Miss Nambro texted me on twenty-sixth July, asked, saying that you were asking her about, uh, who, uh, who it was, and I texted, uh, Mr. Navarro right afterwards too, so I'd forgotten about it. So, did you, were you able to look into that, and what are the results of your findings?
Uh, yes, I was able to look into that, um, we have, I actually just made a call to David Greggo, who was neighbors, the number five hole, asked him if he was tied in to our water system. Uh, he did say he was, um, he was expecting my call, um, I think Debbie Randall had called him and said I would be giving him a call that day. So, uh, like I said, uh, just tell me what he told me. Said he was expecting my call, uh, Debbie had told him I'd be calling him, I did, he did say he was tied in. Uh, at that point, uh, I got together with Ron, Willie, Jay, we went out there, uh, we came back off of the property line, cut it, capped it, and shut that valve off. He did know, we did notify him, uh, that he would no longer be using, uh, water from the golf course.
And this is water on the backside?
Yes, sir.
Or newer than?
On the newer than, yes.
By, uh?
It's right off of five two, I believe, yes.
Okay, is that part of the zone that you were talking about, and the pump and all that for the backside?
Yes, yes.
And, and he was tied into our water?
Yes.
Yeah, come to find out, you know, we've been having some issues, uh, with the, that pump shutting off at night, and then after, you know, we did find out- And then after, you know, we did find out he was tied in, that's kind of why it was shutting off is we had too many heads going at one time.
Pressure dropped.
So when he watered and we had the water on, our pump would shut off. So now after, you know, that's been cut, capped, shut down, the pump is running better, but now we're running into some more issues where it's still shutting off at night.
So you know how long it's been that he's been testing the water?
Before we took over.
I know, I know when our guys went out there, they knew exactly where it was because they were the ones that dug the hole, ran the pipe, tied everything in. Back when SG Management was managing the course.
I mean, I know that water had been used since probably late '21. I got a picture from someone, I don't want to be named for a particular prize over there, but I know there were dragon poses over there prior to that across the street, so. Glad we got the bomb that. To the statement, Miss Randall, did she ask you or did you ask her to give me about who's tied in?
We asked, you know, we were talking about it at the last special meeting and said there was somebody getting water and we assumed it was a sprinkler head hitting somebody's property.
That's what we talked about.
And then I said, well, if you can let us know where it's at, we'll go check it out. And y'all at that point said, we'll talk about this after the meeting. So not to embarrass somebody, I don't know, whatever. And the next day, I'm out driving the golf course in a golf cart looking for any type of sprinkler head that could be hitting somebody's house. I'm like, no, that's not it. Then we get the phone call. I don't remember who got, you got the phone call or the text saying that, okay, it's about a water tie-in. And so at that point, I'm like, okay, I'm not aware of any water tie-in, but that doesn't mean it didn't happen. So let's investigate, you know. Because we did have an issue with a sprinkler head on 4T box hitting that house right there when it came on at night and it hit their windows every night. But that was again, back when SG Management had it and they fixed that sprinkler head, is what I was told. And it's never happened again. So I couldn't imagine what they were talking about.
So to clarify, you did not ask Miss Randall the night of 26th, that's the Wednesday after the meeting, about that?
I asked, yes, I asked y'all who.
Wednesday night or the night of the meeting on Tuesday?
The night of that meeting. I said, I stood right here and asked.
Just want to clarify.
And y'all, y'all said, we'd rather not say at this moment.
And we said, I said, I'll go ask Josh if we can talk about it. And that's why I texted you. I said, who's getting water? Like I thought, we thought you meant a sprinkler was hitting someone else's yard. And then he told me the name and I went, oh. So I called him and asked him, are we sprinkling in your yard? Because that's what I thought we were all talking about. And he's like, no. I'm like, oh, okay, I'm just making sure. And I left it at that. So yes, I did talk to him, but not about a tie-in. I didn't talk to him. I just asked where he gets sprinkled, so.
I didn't, I didn't say that you talked to him about a tie-in. All I said was when I talked to him, he said he had just got phoned with Debbie Randall and to be expecting my call. That's all I said.
Do they know whether or not that was mentioned, Mr. Grego? Did this kind of reach out to you folks at all about this issue or?
No.
Okay. Previously, where, it sounds like, no, anybody taking water or tying in, trying to be bringing it up?
No.
Okay. Josh, how much money do you folks spend troubleshooting the water pressure issues as it resolves this debt?
Well, the first $2,000.
I see a $6,000 bill on here for sprinkler heads.
Right, well, okay, sprinkler heads are a different story. Sprinkler heads get run over by golf cars from machinery and everything else. We, they're hard to get, okay? And you're not going to get them for a hundred dollars. Okay, the sprinkler heads go for $300 new, if you can get them. I have an outlet for the Toro sprinkler heads at a hundred bucks apiece. So we've bought, well, we've bought 60 of them so far just to replace sprinkler heads on the course. And it's probably time to get another 20. But that's golf course maintenance. You're going to expect that anywhere.
Well, I just asked, you folks have been up here a couple of times talking about troubleshooting water pressure issues. My concern here is that was it anything directly tied to a problem and probably a result?
Well, part of the reason the sprink, we buy so many sprinkler heads is because it is a problem. We have a pump that runs all day long and if we turn it off and then fire it back up, that pressure that goes to those heads is just, they're going to blow. So we got to keep that pump running all day long. If we have a system.
Were you not getting my question though? That this water tie-in, that resulted in extra cost for you making troubleshooting water pressure?
Probably so, yeah.
I don't know if you have any clear numbers or it's just a, yes, this time?
I know the meter that that, that that zone was tied into runs about $450 a month.
Okay, and okay, so you can subtract that moving forward this month then, now that it's cut off, what the price difference is?
Right, right.
What a cost back?
Right.
Okay. Are there two more questions for you here? Do you feel Miss Randall has treated your management company with the same objective standards as SG?
I feel like we don't have the full support that we did or that SG Management did. I feel like, again, like Ron mentioned earlier, we stood here 17 months ago and everybody on that board at that time stated, come to us, you know, we don't want to run a golf course. We're out of the golf course business. City has no desire to run a golf course. I know Dora has stated that as well. And then we do come to you for help to repair some things that we're not going to take with us if we ever leave. If we ever fail, we're not going to take the air conditioners. We're not going to take a roof with us or, you know what I mean? And that's what we're asking. We're asking for things that the city owns, you know, let's get those things repaired.
I show my bare but likely supportive of the support nonetheless because we got to take care of them now. Have there been any other issues with the course you folks want to address from late on this evening?
I know we had an issue with our brush pile in the back. I did call Debbie this, I mean Debbie, Dora, this morning, trying to figure out how many complaints there have been and who's calling and trying to, and you know, beforehand, I've already had submitted an email to Dora. She put it in our file. What we do on a daily basis, how quickly that pile can expand. And now we're under a burn ban. We can't burn it. So after calling Dora today, or actually code compliance, spoke with her, she said, I want her to know who made the call. Who called in? How many calls have been called in on us? She, the lady, I don't know her name. She said there was one call that came, excuse me, she said it came in to Dora and I said, well, who was it? So she called Dora. Dora, you know, then they both got on the phone. Dora said, no, Becky, you got this call. They didn't leave a name. All they said was there's a brush pile in the back that's, I don't even know what the conversation was. There was a brush pile in the back that they needed to go take pictures of. Didn't leave a name. At that point, I asked, has there been any other calls? They said, no, one call. Asked if it was a male or female. They called and they just said it was a female that made that call. I know, I know in the past few months, we've been getting, you know, some complaints about, from a male about that brush pile. So that's kind of, I'm just trying to figure out who's calling, what's going on, how many people are actually complaining about it. Two folks on my answer.
I've been approached by a few folks past the month, brush pile, they can't figure out where it is. Someone has described it as hidden way at a back corner behind some building.
Right, it's behind our restroom, behind 14, 16 green. And it's there because if you understand the game of golf, it's in an area that is not in play. All the other, everywhere else on the property, that course is in play. So people hit the ball to those places everywhere else. We try to find a place to pile everything that's not in play. Where people aren't going to be driving the golf carts, they're not going to be hitting balls, they're not going to be looking for things. I'm not saying people don't ever hit it back there because you may find a golf ball or two back there. But for the most part, that is the only place on our course where we can, where we can put them. The previous management company, again, SG Management, his dad owns the property next to the number five. They were able to use, they have a, you know, like a tank there. So they were able to pile it into that tank and then burn it.
Come winter time?
Come winter time or whenever they wanted to. We don't have that much.
Well, I will attest that that pot is in the perfect spot, the best spot that you could possibly beat him for, for the golf course. I play golf all the time, I can't lie to you. I haven't hit a ball with it yet. I'll go there and do. But I mean, it's right by the county road. It's not in the county roadway. It's set back from the road. It's a fairly neat pot. And there are, there's only one or two houses over there that you can even see it. And if anybody would complain, I don't know who else would. I don't know. Debbie, you've told me that you've got several phone calls complaining about it, so.
What exactly is the complaint? Just that it exists?
It's on the backside of the country road.
Okay.
So, I mean, you've got a phone call complaining. But what can we do? I mean, that's all they can do, so. Obviously, it can't burn. I did go about this issue. I think we were thinking about the Republic.
Brush they have?
Because a lot of brush pick up right now this week and it's very expensive for them to pick up your pile and so forth. We can't run. And I think it was suggested that perhaps we could get the fire department together because a lot of times they use things such as this for training purposes. And what happens, that might be an idea to take care of sometime in the future, whenever it's possible. So, but to me, I don't see it at all from anywhere. Already, unless I drive down that county road and across the street from there, there's two, three, four, five big massive piles of dirt in the counties.
What's 2025 piles down there?
Yeah, I mean, it's like, I just see one really big pile of dirt on their side. So it's clearly a decent place to put it if you had to put some somewhere.
And we, back there too, we also have stacks of fertilizer, manure that we purchased from Morales Feedlot. And we put it on the backside of the course because we didn't want it over there where, on Malone Street, where, come to find out, it has no odor. It just, it doesn't have an odor, yeah. But it's good, it's good fertilizer. It probably won't, yeah. But anyway, so we put that, we're trying to do everything by the book and not to make people mad and everything. And we got one person that's upset with it and.
Okay, I'm sending this. I'll get back to the water issue, please. So it had been rumored, okay, about that. When I was a legate, it was, I had a couple of people tell me about that. And I played golf and I also had, I had a port in the irrigation every once in a while and I would go there and there's a settling tank, you know, it's to be, look here on the property that you're talking about, by next to the five. That's a fairly new house. There's a settling tank there. There's a pump house. And so I, I didn't take it seriously because I thought, you know, it's almost my lawn. But then you verified that they did detect in the golf course water.
It was.
And it could have been, it definitely happened before you.
Yes, because we would not have done that. We need the water for our course. We're not.
Okay, well, that poses all kinds of issues. So does anybody have any comments on this besides me?
I do. So Debbie, you asked me on 26 July about this and you haven't said or done anything about it. I asked you guys to investigate it, but you do have the time to get out of it for some brush pile that one person has a concern about.
Okay, so there are two entities. You have the water issue, you have the brush issue. I probably had five or six calls on it. No, I did not go to them because Dora and the mayor said, this is it. I'm like, okay. So I have that off of the brush. Even though I've had phone calls, I say, well, we're working on it. That's all I say. So I don't understand why you're making a big deal of it.
Did you make the complaint?
Did I make the complaint? No, sir. Because I asked Dora about it because it has something been done.
That's fine. I asked the pressure, we should have done it. That's good.
But I have had other complaints and not just from a person, so. Just so you know, this water tie-in thing, I thought we were talking about property being watered with a sprinkler. I didn't know it was a tie-in.
My concern here is that you misled me and your question to me. And then you don't say anything to anybody, but every other little issue you do make a deal out of.
So you want to have an argument about us right now and?
I think, facts we stated. And I also want you to be aware of the term abusive offense in Texas Penal Code, Chapter 39.03, official oppression.
Really?
Okay, okay.
You need to mind your own.
Please stop. Okay. I see this as a fairly serious issue. It is true. And I see some complications. I see, I think this needs to be turned over to the sheriff and let them do a completely outside investigation. And whatever the sheriff determines is how it proceeds. Because, I mean, here we are with, you know, the state's four water restrictions. You have trouble watering the course and then somebody already has a level that appears this is tapped into your water. This is not good. So I don't think any of us can handle this this evening. And I think we should continue any more debates. I don't think we can handle it on our end as a city because if I'm not mistaken, the property is in the county. Go ahead.
Go ahead, the property?
Yes. Okay, ours is in the city, that is in the county. We need to step back from this and let hopefully the sheriff run the thing through.
The time, if y'all like.
Yeah, that's what we need to do here.
Okay. Any more questions?
Not from me.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Okay, guys. Let's go to team guy number 12, please. Considering after Paul's speaking at 8th in October for the citywide yard sale. What do you got here, Dora?
Y'all have a handout that was done for last year. We tell you all normally want us to have a citywide yard sale where we don't charge any permits. Everyone that, we all pick a date and we publish that and publicize it and let people know about it. So we do it in October. We know we're putting it around this time on the agenda. So if y'all, if y'all want to do it again, let us know. If y'all want to pick a date.
I think it'd be nice to phone sign up with the Divine First Saturday Market. Since folks are already out anyway.
The only comment I have on this is as somebody who's taken part in the citywide yard sale in the past is we just had questions as to whether or not we actually had to go like sign up with the city or anything. That just wasn't clear, so if we can just kind of make that known.
We can add that.
Yes, yeah, that would be great.
Well, I like the idea of tying it to the first Saturday, but for anyone who's having a yard sale, they can't go to the first Saturday, like they would not be able to participate or go to buy anything. I think that's why we didn't pick it last year. I do know homecoming is the weekend of the 14th, so I think that the 21st would be a great exhibit between Halloween and homecoming.
That's the weekend I was thinking of as well, 21st. Just to have it at the same relative same time that you guys win.
Did that one go last year, the time frame, the time?
Yeah, the 22nd worked last year. But that's totally up.
October, September?
October 21st. I'll, I'll make motion that we have the, uh, all citywide yard sale for October 21st.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Randall to have the citywide garage sale on, uh, Saturday, October 21st.
I'll say it.
We have a second by, if I can, Mr. Rambis. Um, on further discussion. Uh, sounds great to me, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the, uh, the next item is line number 13, consider an active law and proposing tax rate to give to Melissa Lutz, tax assessor, director, uh, per her request. Uh, I think there was some kind of misunderstanding here from old Assamie, where she was on the, uh, the phone and, and to the microphone, and also had a jolly dicksmere. Uh, we are not required to give a tax rate at this time, uh, in, in the sense that we have four, five leases to do it, if we need to. Uh, as long as she has it for September 30th, obviously, we don't want to wait that long, we'd like to have it filed out before then, uh, and, uh, so also, the other thing too, if we do propose a tax rate, um, you're not stuck to it, you could always change it, we propose a tax rate at this time, you can, you can change it, but you can go, go higher, so, long story, that's short story, we proposed a higher rate, in case, so you can drop it, but there's, there's no sense in wasting time on it. Uh, we're just going to, to get, to work on our budget, uh, because you, you can't go up the tax rate until you've adopted a budget, that's going to determine how much money you might need, uh, after you say you've got to raise it, and so forth and so on, so. Counsel, any questions?
I thought we had to give her something.
No.
This evening, and then you could change it, too.
Yeah, that was a misunderstanding, I had, I spoke with, uh, Mrs. Lutz at the lake on Friday, and also yesterday, to clarify everything, and, uh, she says it clearly was not her desire to have a, uh, proposed rate at this time, so, that could be any time that we want, as long as it's wide headline, and if we go over the non-revenue tax rate, okay, uh, then we have to, to put a, to, to do it in time to have a public hearing, and we have to post at least, uh, five days for a public hearing. If you don't go over the non-revenue tax rate, you don't need to have a public hearing, but you must post it that you're gonna, like, on your agenda, that you're gonna post the, uh, the tax rate. Does everybody understand that? If you go over the non-revenue rate, you must have a public hearing, and give the citizens at least five days to respond and come and speak, and also hear from us, okay? But if you don't go over the, the non-revenue rate, you don't need to have a, a public hearing, you still can, you just don't need to have one by law.
Mr. Mayor, you're talking about the non-revenue tax rate, is that the same as the direct tax rate?
Yeah, I think they just all the non-revenue now, so, so what the non-revenue is, is, uh, obviously, I think most people know Medina County, and a lot of places, especially Medina County, our tax valuations are, are, are skyrocketing, and, uh, so if you keep your, your tax rate the same, you still have a tax increase, okay? Um, so the non-revenue rate is the rate that we would charge against the same amount of revenue as last year.
Right.
Okay, and believe it or not, uh, since we're on this, it's a great time to talk about it, uh, you know, not too long ago, we passed, uh, uh, a tax freeze for, for citizens 65 and over, okay? And you know, I will want to realize, that's gonna affect our, our, our non-revenue, our non-revenue rate, or the effective tax rate, it's gonna make that higher, okay? And as it stands right now, it's about 11 cents per $100 valuation, okay? And, and so, uh, in essence, we're not taking, uh, it probably affects anywhere between, depending on how you do your, your, uh, calculations, anywhere between $25,000 and $30,000, uh, that, that we won't have if we don't pass it on, okay? Almost everybody passes it on, and they have these freezes, and, and, uh, so essentially, when you pass a tax freeze, that means if you're 65 right now, and your taxes are $500 a year, they will always be $500 a year as long as you live, okay? If you, when you pass, or if you sell the property or anything, the, the, the valuations still accumulate, uh, the valuations won't stop, just the tax is freeze, okay? If you've sold the property, sold or handed down, or whatever, it immediately jumps to the appraised value, okay? So the, the formant of determining that is kind of complex, because, uh, you still have, okay, like, I think for, for us here this year, it affects $47 million worth of property. Now, that doesn't mean we're not getting taxed on that $47 million, we're just not getting the entire amount, because it's got to be recalculated for the tax freeze, okay? And it ends up being approximately 11 cents, uh, on valuation per $100 of valuation, so, and, uh, so essentially, what happens when you pass a tax freeze is you're, you're asking the rest of the taxpayers to subsidize the tax freeze for, for those 65. Does that make sense, everybody? Any questions, guys?
I appreciate your articu- articulation of subsidizing.
Yeah, well, it, it's just good to get it out there, I mean, we're not going to discuss it later, but this is a great time to talk about it, um, you know, to me, I don't mind you with some money, so our, our senior citizens can have some relief, and I don't think, I think most of our population wouldn't mind you, so, and by the way, it was an unanimous vote when we passed it. And for a discussion on this, guys? Does anyone wish to send a proposed tax rate this evening? We've got a lot of work to do before we can do that.
I'd really like to look over some of these numbers that we were just giving.
I thought so. I thought so. I just need to let everybody know, we just now got our parameters last week, the county tells us what we can and can't do since we, without having an election, okay? And so, we've got all kinds of numbers, uh, that we have to calculate and talk about, so it's gonna be a good while before we throw something out there. And also, this council did not say last week that we were going to raise taxes, we didn't save more money, okay? It was discussed as always, okay? So, uh, once again, just remember, we're citizens too, I think we all own property, we're gonna pay the same taxes, uh, I also own a business here in town, I get taxed double, I get taxed on my inventory, I get taxed on my equipment, uh, I get, and so forth and so on, so we completely understand the burden of taxes, so, that will all be taken into account as we proceed, try to, uh, deal with, deal with some of the, and we've been dealt, that we didn't have anything to do with at the moment, we have three UDT plans panel, uh, and, and Mayor, we're gonna work hard at doing the best we can on it, so. If that's anything, all right. That is the, uh, that is the regular council meeting right there, uh, we will take a short recess, please, and then we will reconvene for our budget workshop. We're back into, uh, budget workshop, like, uh, so. Okay, get started, people, guys, um, I need your handout that shows the tax rates for the last few years. If you could refer to that, write their personal notes, because they have, uh, there's a push to try and keep our, our tax rate exactly the same as last year. So, by the way, our tax values are the best last year. That's one thing, that is, I don't know. Okay, the last year's tax rate, okay, was 0.4913, 49 cents, $100 of valuation, okay? And even though it was a lower tax rate from the previous year, 32 cents, by the way, that was, uh, essentially mandated, our county, that was the limit that you could go to, I mean, couldn't go any higher than that on the ratio. That being said, that was supposed to be 0.4866, okay? And then you couldn't go over the approval, like, the council adopted absolutely over the approval rate to not rush, but 0.4913, 0.01 cents. Okay, so, so additional, additional sales tax revenues, last year, uh, it mandated that the tax rate would drop, it was small, okay? And if you're not going to drop it to a certain amount, then the citizens must vote, okay? And that being said, council actually went over a little bit, everybody got petitioned up to, to force the issue on Anderson, who came on, and, you know, it is what it is, so, the argument that keeping everything the same, uh, it's could be pretty hard on us, okay? I'm putting that out there, uh, because if you look at it, uh, our non-revenue rate with the tax freeze, it's 55 cents on the rate, that's non-revenue rate. Last year's budget, before someone just got here, okay, the non-revenue rate was 45.27, the council voted to raise it by, by three cents, actually by, uh, almost four cents, 0.01 cents, which is probably just why, I'm not complaining about that, I'm just saying that the non-revenue rate was, uh, expanded upon, in total, adopted was 49 cents, which is almost four cents higher than the non-revenue rate, okay? So, any questions so far? All right, then if you go back in 2021, the same thing happened, uh, the non, the non-revenue, non, that's what I'm saying, the, uh, the effective tax rate, I say effective tax rate is supposed to, that's actually the same, uh, was 48.97, the voter approval rate was 58.46, council met in the middle and adopted 52.33.
I thought it was 52.98.
Uh, just everybody, this is what, this is that one? This is for 2021?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's good. Okay, 52.98, actually, I think I did see that on the chart, it was 52.98, but I can appreciate you.
It's in all our audits, yeah.
Yeah, so, so let's just, let's just go right back with the D O A, it was still in between the effective, the non-revenue rate and the voter approval rate, okay? And I, if you went back in the past and checked all the tax rates over the years, uh, it's probably very similar, okay? Um, so in other words, it's, yeah, yeah, we don't want to raise taxes, okay, but it's been done the last three, four years, it's been done the year before that, and we have some big goals that we gotta fill in our budget, now pointing this out, don't take this wrongly, I'm not saying, Mayor Cook is not saying, hey, let's go crazy with this, I just want to point this out, okay? Um, so, uh, let's see, there's some other things on here, um, well, once again, same thing happened in 2020, uh, although it was barely in between, uh, the non-revenue rate in 2020 was 0.5141, uh, voter approval was 0.5322, and if you test under the, uh, the voter approval at 5.98. So please remember that as we proceed, uh, things, uh, and so forth. And then also, uh, it's also been said that citizens were very clear when they turned down the drainage box, they wanted no non-revenue taxes, okay?
Really?
So, maybe 10 year point, maybe, maybe not, I've generated a doubt, okay? But that isn't what the citizens said, it wasn't my opinion, uh, I'll give you some comparisons, you're right, but this is what they were talking about, and they said they didn't want their drainage box taxed, and I was one of the officers in the audience, okay? Just to give you an example, our average, I said, I, you know, years, approximately $135,000, okay? Um, at our, okay, if you have, uh, 0.5589, oh, wait, okay, last year's tax rate, 49.12, that would have cost the citizen 668 hours and 17 cents, okay? Now, the bottom proposal would have cost that same citizen, uh, an additional $1583 a year, for the same amount, that's why I was voting down, not because of the non-revenue tax, non-revenue taxes, because of the substantial increases of, 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 42% toward an average of, for everyone's, uh, without taxes, okay? So, that's why, uh, not to mention the substance, so please remember that.
I concur with your sentiment, I'd say, no one's even had their taxes raised, but they're, they're overwhelming consensus, we cannot want that project, it's a trip all like, both articulate, to me, it's gonna back to the 22 people, I don't know about the math on that, but, um, they're frustrated about their content, and he said, I, I'm concerned here, though, it wasn't priced to all that, you, that, that comes to us as well, but, it's made of money, it's tightening, and, 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 and,[1729.52]
This is everything they want, that it's everything we can get. So, yes, I will suggest asking, can y'all cut a little bit? I'm not seeing, get rid of all the big stuff that we need on the same, try to trim it here and there.
I agree.
So, so also remember, I think my numbers were actually a little conservative on the airport. It was costing us, okay, I was at 60,000, that was a quick wish. That we only lose 60,000s coming here on the airport. And then when I see this, this proposed budget here, I guess, are those old numbers too? The 24 budget request?
Which one are you referring to?
Just the very top one, doesn't matter which rate, is that the 4913 rate? Okay, you got the airport here. Okay, all right, all right, since you're operating expenditures, you're requesting 166,000?
162,602.
Okay, that's a change.
It's launched from the last budget workshop.
Okay, well, the, hang on.
It will, 170 something, I believe, it'll be dropped.
Okay, all right, so those expenditures, that's gonna throw in fuel, that's gonna throw in, right? Essentially fuel.
Yeah, they drop on, yeah, drop on.
Right, and of course, that's getting sold, so that's not necessarily an item that you cut. Okay, I have numbers on that too, on the later, we get to it. We're essentially selling fuel and not reporting it back. And then I believe the numbers that we have for the amended budget fiscal year 9, 2023 are not complete. So, so we can't really compare it too much right now, that's what I'm saying. We can't come up with a proposal rate. Okay, we have to get these numbers complete, is what we want, to see how we're gonna finish this year. They were coming up on it. So we have to go out to the beginning, how did the budget hit? How did, we had our goals there? Where did we mess up? Where did we succeed? And so forth.
So, one thing I've stood on a little bit, talked a little about, Stacy. We've got 13 positions under 40, paid under $40,000 per year. And those positions have been involved for more than one year. If we could reward those specific positions that are shown the dedication or of course, actually willing to work and stick through the low pay, it costs $23,000 just to get those. And that's, there's a variety of paying increases on there just to get them closer.
What would the lowest person be looking at?
Well, myself.
I think we have to have a benchmark there. As you were, I already said.
I mean, the time benchmarks, they're not, they're not all made the same amount as it is.
In other words, the benchmark would be the least that they can, is you getting, to have a living wage.
And so, well, to the place to have a trimming mark here is the airport manager and the part-time library clerk. Because on part-time, I don't know what they're actually making. There's just a total number per year. So that definitely skews the math a bit.
Have you taken notes or? Is that maybe broken down?
Right, well, if I have the rate on the action per hour, the rate for those folks is certainly, it would help. That's part of that, but if we have accounts that's paid by 12, that's 12,345 dollars, that'll get us halfway there.
Also, we've heard to do a 2% to 4% increases to 46. It would save us 40, almost 42,000 dollars. 42,000 dollars, sorry. The, just by going to a 2% to 4% raise versus a 4% to 6%.
That's a difference of 42,000 dollars. But that, that's 4 to 6 across the board or just the?
Going from 2 to 4, which anybody above 40 gets 4, and then everybody under, backwards. Everybody above 40 gets 2%. And everybody below 40 gets up to 4%. I just put it at 4% because we were wanting the department that's done that. But I put that 4, and it saves 41,590 dollars, so, okay, I like my 590. 41,000.
How about probably what you request?
From the 4% to 6% raise, changing it to 2% to 4% raise, it saves us 41,590 dollars. And that's what we split, as I explained.
You know, to me, at this point in time, I think, I think you can't go across the border right now on cost of the increases. We have people that make substantial money. We have other people that don't. And I don't think you should have something across the board like that. I think you, my opinion, I think we need to take care of some of the lower wage earners more so than the higher wage earners. I know they're serious. I think we can catch up with that later. Some kind of cost of the increase everywhere, for example, but, but, but we can't even fill the positions we already have in the works. We need those, they're here for a reason. Okay? And we can't maintain the city if we don't have those positions filled. We can't fill those positions if we don't offer a better, better package, a better set to work for us.
George, did you apply the cost of the increases to everyone below 50,000?
40.
Below 40?
For the 6%.
Okay, what about above 40?
Above 40 was the, you see on, on the two sheet, the, what I put in front of y'all, the handout? There is, I also did a 6 and 2.
Where's that at? Where's that at?
It was second top.
It's the other page, yeah. So, and there, and what y'all have is the different tax rates. That's why y'all have the different ones on the, the only thing that's changed is the water and sewer. So that was just the one page that, that you have for the 6 and 4 and 6 and 2. That's what I did.
Would the rest of council be amenable to an 8% increase for everyone under 40?
You're asking, that we do that, that we get taxes off?
We give everybody 8%, and then we fill out those positions, we're still gonna be, we're gonna be below.
Well, I just see what those numbers look like, is the 4% for everyone, 4% for everyone over 40,000. Uh, if you just, to the American point there, don't increase that pay right now. Focus on those folks at the bottom.
So now you want to give them more salary, anybody's gonna know?
No.
Not really.
Wow, I believe they worked for a whole year, worked their butts off, and they're gonna get no reward for next year. Let's ask them to just go ahead.
They're giving them rewarded, really good pay chase, so they'll get some.
Very, but they're, 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 they're coming to the city, they're paying us $33,000 per year. A lot of the folks are making about more than double per month.
Okay, with, just hear me out for a second. The under 40, if they, if the 4% increase, okay, 4, at this point, 4. If they got a 4% increase, and I'm talking, this is supposed to be what we've got, or this. Here's a 1,400 dollar raise, 1,300 dollar raise, 13, 13, 19, 18, 1,200, 1,800, 1,700. They're getting decent raises at 4%. And they will, all of those of 7, 8, 3, or 4 will be making their median income at a 4% increase. I'm not saying they're not worth it, I'm, trust me, this is not, I'm just playing the numbers game. At 6%, then they all make it to the median, if not above it. Okay, but you wanna go 8%? I'm sorry.
So if you take percent of the where?
Those making less than 40,000, only.
And then everybody else gets no raise.
And my thought process here is it's offset by the folks on the top not getting the 2% or 4%. And I don't know how that sounds.
What I'm gonna hand you now, I got from Judy Langberg. I wanted her to give, because of course, they have to have it for grant reasons, what the household median is. At, I think she said in 2020, it was 33.
Yep.
And so, that is what they're using right now, that's what she gave, what's highlighted.
75.
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
I have not the consensus up.
This is what they have to use when they go in for grants.
How does it take?
Correct.
15 dollars an hour, it takes it to 16 or 20. 16, 20, 8%.
Oh.
Yeah, she, she said after 20, 20 cents, it went up.
Okay, so that's why I can say it was 20, 20, okay. It doubled up?
That's what she gave me.
Wait, I think that was, I'll go see for something else.
Oh, no, she just, because I asked her if she could, because I know that she uses it for the grants. They have to have it, and so, because I did tell her that we were being told at the 33, and she said it was, but after 20, 20 cents, it went up.
Okay, okay, so outside of just the median income, that was what?
What we just had to do is highlight what you.
75, take 30,000 dollars. Since I had margin of error.
They're estimating the median income now, divided by 75,000, so 23,000 dollars. Same difference, and there's even more discrepancy.
Yeah, 106, 43,000.
Thank you, George, back to Simone, that was.
Nice, though, I think that still conquers the point, we really need to increase the pay for our spot folks.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, I have a bracket in front of me, I was kinda working on other things for this workshop. Once again, I'll still say, there has to be a minimum for those folks to make down there. And not necessarily the 40, under 40,000, it could be under, I think at 15 or down to 32, 33,000. We have to award the 15 dollars an hour, which I think is just not enough, right now with inflation and the cost of things. You know, we need to, we need to up our game.
Basically, 4% is probably not enough for you.
At the 60 cents an hour, the 15.
Yeah, that's nice for the restaurant.
8 cents a dollar, 20.
All right, now I see.
Okay, we threw that out there.
Let's soak in. So yours, you said the highest was 8%?
Yes. The part-timers are wild outliers, they just don't know much they make per hour. But, yeah, the highest that happens is 8% for the 13 employees that have been here for more than one year and has less than 40,000 dollars positions to be filled.
You're listing anywhere between 4 and 8%. Be good, you have a certain amount of people raising.
The part-timers, the one that you're talking about, the library, and also the, for the airport? They are making, they work less than so many hours, because if they work over 1,000 hours, we have to give them full benefits. So you have to remember that, so.
Nice, I stayed there.
Yeah, and that's why right now they work, I mean, the one age, she just works 40 hours every two weeks. Part-time at the library.
They have an older age, some work.
Yeah, and then we have the airport manager that just works 2.5 hours per day. Yeah, but just, yeah, but just remember that, I mean, if you're.
Okay, so wild outlier for the, for the part-time library worker, that's 32% then, based on 20 hours a week. Just because that is a, a, but basically volunteer work. 93,000 dollars in here, that's disrespectful. I just think that's disrespectful. And I'm not trying to make a joke for everybody, that's, that's not. And the airport manager, even the folks who don't personally care for the airport manager, have a great deal of respect for the work that that airport manager does. So to me, that also equals some sort of pay for this, and I don't have, that's like a 5% now, because I was assuming 20 hours a week, but.
Well, that personal, also, that personal responsibility is there for his end.
Well, that's.
Sort of, so it's a little different.
Two budgets ago, Josh, we tried making her full-time with benefits. So she, so we were gonna be having a food farm, and it wasn't over. It was not budgeted. Council didn't budget it, that's why she was left apart.
Your taxes here, I remember you, the current rate was 4913. What, what tax base did you use to get that 3 million dollars? Was it on the worksheet from the calendar?
Which one?
Uh, okay, okay. It's your rate that has 6 and 4%. Tax rate 4913. And then your operating non-revenue for taxes, 3 million, 46,000.
Yeah.
What if you, what was the valuation that you're basing that on?
No, the, the taxes only, there's a first line I know. Of course, and then you have the, we didn't do, we.
With the tax.
That would be using, it would be using the 242 million, 618.
That's what I, my worksheet did.
Yes, the work.
This is sentence.
Yes, the one that comparison, the worksheet that y'all got, that's what we went off of.
And they said we'll probably get the 242 million, it's still at your feet, but that would be what they, they're conservative.
Because the, the, the taxable property is less than last year. Or is that because it's?
So this is, this is it, based on what Melissa gave us, and then.
That's what she had on her worksheet?
On that, on the calculation worksheet, yes, and then that's where, that's what we're committing that, that's what, that's on that line.
Okay, but you requested 3 million.
That, that is the, but you're looking at this whole, whole compare. So it's the current, that's where you put that number in, that number that we're getting in my hair.
Okay.
Yeah, and then you've got your sales tax, you got the, you got franchise, you got share.
Can I ask, on the, the sheet with the highlighter things? Why is a 52 rate lower in revenue than a 558? Oh, never mind, yep, see, I have. But it's a non-revenue, a non-revenue somehow higher than the increase above current, confusing.
Well, non-revenue actually gives us less revenue. What they call non-revenue actually gives us less revenue.
Right.
So I think they did this one to show it gets closer to the actual, no, they.
What do you mean, Joe?
The one in purple, right?
You're saying by the less revenue?
Right.
How, how does the non-revenue get to be less?
I mean, I think it's pointing out the same, the tax base, but because we did the tax rates, I think that's why we're getting less money out of that one.
Well, what it's doing is, is to say, okay, that is the rate, let's just say if you go in, $1 million, sales tax, just throwing it out there, that's right here. The non-revenue rate is gonna be the rate that would bring in the exact same amount of money.
It's actually less.
So how could it be less?
I think it's because of the tax rates.
Well, no, that's included in the, in the non-revenue rate, that's why it's high, that's why it's 55 something. Obviously, operating is less, it's deciding to bring the same amount, it's showing you, well, this is what you got last year, got away with, whatever you did, and this is the rate that you would charge this year to bring in the exact same amount of money. You ever take a few days? Honestly, I could be misunderstanding something. So, and the non-revenue rate for this year is approximately like 155 something. This is 6 cents higher than the adopted tax rate from last year. Now, the non-revenue rate this year without the, the tax rate would have been about 44 cents. But with the tax rate, you increase it by 11 cents, to get the same amount of operating expenses you, same amount of operating revenue if you have that, that's a public tax.
This is from last week?
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. It was on Friday.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I might think that was.
On the police department, get arrested for, what was it, fifty-eight thousand for some deep, uh, view, uh, protective view.
Uh, yes, they raised some of their, their line items, yeah, for, for different, yeah, that's what I mentioned.
Yeah, well, I thought there was, what the U T R was quite expensive. Wasn't your weapon, that was very expensive.
Thirty-six for their armor.
Mm-hmm.
Because it, it has a seven-year life.
Yes.
It's seven.
It's at seven years now. When I looked it up on the internet, it's supposed to last five, five to ten years.
Last ten years.
Yeah, so we're like right in the middle of its lifespan, like, we don't know, it could be dead, or it could not be, I mean, we're in the middle.
There's some good information there, because I was, I was believing everything, it was done.
Well, it kind of is, it kind of gets close, so it's a question mark, so.
From what I've heard, they do genuinely do armor, they also need new cameras, because a lot of kids keep dying. They really, really want the new truck, but they don't need it, so they push that off, they do need the new cruisers. And they'll ask for a little bit of that, we asked our grant to look into some, uh.
Sorry, I have a grant for it.
They offered, they offered the armor.
No, that, that, right.
The vehicles. Right, so we asked our grant, right, which is to look for the armor and cameras grants.
And you can, but you can't count, right?
Yeah.
Well, that would be something to, to get it before the next budget.
I agree.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Well, we already had an incident last Friday, I'll tell you what, it could have been worse, but I wouldn't take away their best, what they're asking for. It's already at a term of seventeen years. No, they, yeah.
It's a, it's a.
I know, we only need one car, there's only one, it's going to go out of mileage.
But that does say it's a point for the, all of the works, because they can use the other car.
Well, they only have three people patrolling every day, correct?
I don't know how many.
You mentioned, they've got three shifts, there's always overlap with the shifts. I agree, something doesn't add up for me on the cars either, I just want to have a trust and.
How many vehicles they have?
I think eleven.
No, ten. So one, one vehicle assigned to one officer, correct?
Two, it seems like.
I thought we only had seven vehicles.
Well, you include, okay, you've got the police chief, um, vehicle, you have, um, the, Chris's, the, the truck he uses. Um, and then the other vehicles that the officers, right, they trade off.
I believe it's eleven, I'm not sure.
We have a little bit of officers.
I think, I think we're sure it's one vehicle, no, well, it's a number on that list, but.
Oh, okay, okay, got it.
I, I was thinking the same thing, but, um. Oh, another issue they brought up was that whenever one, they break, because they just grab hard a lot, so they do need some extras, but I hear your point there, because they don't have any cars. Because I guess they have one for sure. And your point that a second one's not necessarily at that mileage point. Is it broken to the point of, or just keep breaking, or is it just?
The mileage was even high on the, on the level of view.
Well, I agree.
Of course, they're only driving in divine, so, you know, they're probably putting up with it, six thousand miles a year, maybe, if that.
One is definitely at a mileage out, we know that.
And that's the one that's going to go to the airport?
Though we would like to see where it's.
Right, yeah, stuff, yeah, yeah.
But that's the one we need to replace, like, if that's whatever we're discussing, we don't really need to replace the second one.
So, I just don't understand why you have eleven units, and you got, how many officers?
Eleven vehicles, though.
How many units they have?
They'll have ten cars.
Yeah.
The, the, the sheet that gives was numbered, it looked like eleven, but if you actually found one of them skipped, there's a number in it.
So are, are each one of those being utilized every other day, every day? I mean, I think we need to get with them and find out.
To track and get it, because, I mean, if I want you to think that I'm really maximizing use, obviously, the last day use is going to go dead, rent them out, so. You could have touched the numbers there, you might not, they all had a fair bit, all of, I think, one had a lot of miles on it.
Yeah. I don't have notes.
Yeah, you know, I don't know what it's like.
Yeah. Why would you want?
What's?
One, I mean. Assign an officer a vehicle, and if he doesn't work, whatever, you part-time, you know, Thursday, Friday, and that car sits there, that vehicle sits there, why?
I don't think they're going to work.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just mentioning, I don't know how you have eleven vehicles if you got eleven officers, I mean, it's one assigned to them, I mean.
Well, we do know the one is.
Did they take them home? Well, Chris has the Dodge, I know that, uh, Ms. Benidys, she has the Explorer, and then you got the other vehicle, so.
Best place to be tied in our belts.
Okay, I have the lieutenant on the line, everyone's speaker, he's saying we have eleven vehicles and we have eleven, um, officers. However, we did have one just turning his two weeks' notice.
Alright.
So, um, that's going to lead us down to ten. Um, Chris, the vehicle, yeah, nine plus the school officer, they don't count the school officer.
We have some other vehicle coming.
I'm sorry?
We have some others.
Yes, yes, but, I mean, during school, if, what he's trying to say is that the school has them.
Right.
Unless it.
Unless it's just something extremely dire. So you've got eight of us, oh, so you've got ten officers and ten cars, or eleven cars.
Right, and Chris, so who, who shares vehicles? Is there, how many vehicles are being shared by officers?
Uh, two, two vehicles are being shared.
It's because the ones that truck that they use for, for drive stuff.
Yours, yours and Candy's, no one shares, right?
Correct.
How upset would you?
I typically make them whether, um, I typically leave the truck for one of the, the next supervisor to share, if they need it.
How upset would you?
They're all mailing out.
Okay.
How upset would he be to, uh, not dedicate two cars to being candy? Tied in our belts.
You think, let them have a decision. Like, that's the department that decides.
I'm asking a question.
I think he needs to come back and just, so we can get everything, with all those.
It just depends on if they, you know, they like, what they know in response, if they want to, any kind of answer that after hours.
Out of that.
That was my first thought, my first thought, I mean, that's why they, they haven't really available.
Yeah, I was just going to try and figure it out, and it's, what's going to be?
I agree, between the last and now. Don't break into your house.
Alright.
I want to get there.
Let's try to achieve.
Now they feel like it gives them the idea of it.
Okay, so Chris, they're talking about possibly just, um, I think, from what I'm understanding, is, um, doing one vehicle and not the other vehicle, just.
Fine, I can do the school vehicle.
Well, I guess, which one is the one that has the, the most miles, not, not, it doesn't, not the school officer, right?
Correct, no.
It's, it's the other one that has the, the.
In, in its six.
It's the one that has the miles, that's the one, that's the one y'all wanted to replace, right? But at the same time, do the, the SRO.
Correct.
Right, so that's what they're saying, that's what they're, that's what they're saying, um, about possibly only doing the one that has the miles that y'all are wanting to replace due to the miles.
Could we dedicate the SRO officer at night when they're not working to an officer and just.
The school won't let us, right, Chris? The school won't let, the, the, the resource officer vehicle has to, Zix, the only one that can use it.
Correct.
The school won't allow for any of your officers to use it, right?
No way.
I don't like this.
Just leave it as it is.
Yeah.
They, they pay.
Yeah.
So.
Do you have evidence? We, uh, for grants, they're giving, the grants, what, seventy-five thousand, and all we have to do is come up with thirty-six for the vehicle, or two vehicles.
I think Dora should get us the number of, what it would be for one vehicle.
Or one vehicle, one truck, maybe, because that.
No, because the, the thirty-six part, Chris, listen, I'm trying to find this little savings here, as you said, take it away.
Your point is valid.
Yes, we got the gear that, that was missing.
Oh, yeah, Chris, so, um, y'all increased the line items for, um, because y'all needed equipment, y'all needed cameras, y'all needed body armor.
Yes, right.
Okay, and so, um, again, um, the body armor, you said one of them was, I think, seven years, it already at its, at its end?
Yeah, we typically, you want to replace body armor five to seven years, we were at the seven-year mark.
We just, uh, Debbie was just saying she researched it, and it shows seven to ten.
No, five to ten.
Five to ten.
Probably depending what brand of body armor.
Yeah, I don't know what.
I think it's a certain brand.
I went with generic.
Debbie said she, she researched it, and she said that she saw that beside the. She's saying that we're kind of like in the middle.
Right, that's why we go with the seven.
But, but, so it is true, it is ten years?
It's up to ten years.
Up to ten.
I, you got to consider a lot of wear and tear.
We're not saying that.
Well, I thought we just tried to get a reformation, Chris.
Okay, and then, Chris, the other things out that y'all increased, y'all line items for, for cameras as well?
Cameras and, um, for some office furniture.
Did they look into, uh, grant money for those cameras?
I'm sorry?
Did they look into grant money for those cameras?
Uh, can you look, uh, is there grant money for, for cameras, for the body armor, stuff like that, that y'all need, is there grants available?
Yes.
There's grants available?
Yeah.
Does that take me into account, the grants, assuming you get them?
So, what is the process, Chris, for these grants?
Uh, I don't, I don't have anything in free at the moment, um, I can get back to y'all with it.
Grant money, look into that, I would, I think to do that.
Okay, alright, yeah, if you can do that.
I think, I think grant the.
Do I very? It's simple, we can't, I can't.
Okay, we'll, we'll get together tomorrow. I mean, go into. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Let me have a chat. Fair point, fair point. I can see that position.
He's going to check on those, and he'll get those.
Okay, I, sorry, grab a mic. Could we look into a grant for pumping our sewage fluid, the pump that create normally to the golf course to help water and fertilize? I'm sure there's grant money for that, because that's reuse of wastewater and environmental, that's very good.
Is it gray water?
Uh, no, I was thinking, you're pumping it in, it's not, it's a fluid, it's not quite gray water, it's not black water, it's, you have to treat it after it's, you do all your space treatment, and you have to treat the water before you release it back in the environment. Ish. I think we, I think we looked into that once before, and I think there's something, we were too unable to do that, I think that was like, about six years ago.
We would have to have a separate system to smooth that.
Well, we already do.
My, my point is that they can type. Tank and storage, and to be able to use that for sprinklers.
Right, yep. Could we look into grants for that, and the cost of that, that's how you support it?
Just have a special piping, just for gray water, to distinguish it from the drinking water.
Yep, you got bucket signs, don't, don't drink it.
We got to that pass.
We can ask.
Okay, that, that's like a year or two. Right, right, no, no, for sure.
Yeah.
It has special use.
I'm hoping it's a issue.
So, um, J R, um, is here, because he, him and Pete having, going over, I know that, um, the mayor was also, um, um, talking to us about, we have, um, on Wedgwood, we have a, um, a problem, and we're trying to work with that, that person, and so Pete, um, asked J R, and I know that we're going to need to know, because we're going to need to know if it's going to be for this current budget, or it's going to be for the new budget, and then, I know you had some good points as far as, like, some of the things that you think that just.
Talking about the financials, right?
Yes, yes.
There's no way we can pay five figures for that.
And, and I think that's what they were wanting to.
Minutes.
Yeah.
You know, so.
So is there a, a different?
You can't factor that, there's just no way, uh, and I think, I, I think Luca would understand that too, so, uh, I think what's interesting there is, is that he's lived there for fifty-five years, okay, and then he hasn't had an issue until recent years, okay, and so, all he asked for to begin with was essentially part of a speed bump, because all the water's going into his yard in one particular area, to divert it down the street. He wasn't asking for recreating these, he wasn't asking, you know, so right now, I think he has some kind of a sandbag or something there, he would never get a lot of rain.
Right.
You know, okay, now there's also a drainage pipe, that, that's on his property, so there's a, uh, a drain right next to his driveway, and then there's like probably three-inch pipe that actually runs from there, all, he has a very long backyard, and it runs all the way down there into the alley. Okay, you can see where the water pours into, and there's like a, a big erosion right there where the water pours into, okay, and, uh, but his big concern is now it's starting to flow towards his door, okay, and then, and the door, he has, he has a little piece of ground or whatever right by his door, sidewalk, a lot of people do plants and stuff, but he has it filled up with golf balls, okay, and, you know, you got to know, right? So, anyway, nowadays, when we do get a ton of rain, whatever, the golf ball is actually floating through the rest of the yard. And it's right next to his house.
It's quite a sight to see.
Huh?
It's quite a sight to see.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so, you know, in that fact, when I was walking down the creek with, uh, Debbie last week, there was like three, four, five, six golf balls there, and I said, this is a couple of Lucas's, you know, so, but, but, but anyway, you know, it's, it cannot be a ten-thousand-dollar expense for that, there's just no way, there has to be some other way to do it, and he's not asking.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, yeah, we got to go, we got to try something, and to me, what's gotten on his ear, don't take me wrong, okay, but, but if you got a, if you have a three-foot speed bump here, three-foot wide, and it diverts the water down, to live mode and down into the drainage system, and all that, and whatever, so what's wrong with it? It's not going into his yard, but into his house, it's gone into his house yet, the last time he said it came close. So what has changed over there? Okay, I assume sediment, it's reached, it's washed away and so forth, and water flows increased, I don't know, but you can go over there and stand at his property, and you can see the slope, you don't even need to have.
Oh, it's huge, so.
Yeah.
When he talked to me about that.
It's on Wedgwood, looking for that.
Fit top-down, do that, going toward the market.
You come from live.
Down slope, down.
What happened was.
When he called me on it, he had said, originally, when y'all talked about this many, many, many years ago, they first suggested a little less speed bump thing that you said, and he said, he denied that because his wife had a little sports car that wouldn't make it over the speed bump, but now he's thinking, maybe we do, maybe we should try the speed bump, and maybe his wife's.
Well, well, his speed bump.
Parked on the street, you know?
He asked me, okay, originally, he was talking about his speed bump, go across the entire driveline, as if there was a curve, and then he would just drive over.
Yeah.
Okay, and now he's asking for just, if you're facing his house, the left part of the driveway, which allows room for her to park her sports car, it's about this long.
Correct.
Okay, so, so that's what he was asking.
Yes.
So right now, you know, I haven't driven by there lately, but he probably still has his sandbags, very wants to see, wants to see if it's going to work.
That's true, well, they have been there for a long time.
Fifty-five years.
When was the last time they paved that, that road, street?
I think it was in oh-six or oh-seven.
And they just paved over it, right?
They slurry it, as you know, first stuff, it starts with.
What happened was it raised it up, it raised the road up, because they didn't, they didn't, uh.
Yeah, they did not take it out and re.
Yeah, so they had to redo it, so they just, they just put asphalt over asphalt, and it raised it up, because I grew up in that neighborhood, and I know that curbs, uh.
Because I grew up in that neighborhood, and I know that curve used, uh, where the curve is at, where the, where the road met the curve was at least that high, so they just evened it out, and that's why all that road with the water.
Nice curves there where it just. Water, so. Over time, for when you. Some people, eventually your curve is gonna shrink, shrink, shrink. And so.
His point there, it's just that.
The pavement.
Oh, yeah.
Water flows down. And so.
Traveling a little faster now. Just remember I was saying about over here, Miss Gomez? She never had problems, uh, with water going when it rained, with the water going into her land, because she got, she's got a daycare. Now that's been paved, that water just flows with it, before it was soaking in sand. Now, now it just.
It's not a water.
Yeah, exactly.
Ultimately, if we do put a speed bump or something there on the driveway, you're just diverting a little bit of the water, but it's gonna go around it, but it's still gonna follow the path of these resistance and go down. If it doesn't affect his property, it'll affect the neighbor's house. Just the curve is too, too short. So that, it's like you're passing.
Well, look at that.
Yeah, and then it'll be kicking into the neighbor and.
Although I don't know that the, that neighbor has such a, they're more on, he kind of does this, that his next neighbor just kind of doesn't.
A little snarky.
It gets less and less as you go. Mine, by the time you leave to my house, it does a definite dip in the middle.
So I think like doing something like this is more of a Band-Aid fix. It's not going to solve the problem, it's not gonna have water coming into his yard. It may not be as much, but water will get diverted over the curb next to it and around, going to the next yard. And, uh.
Well, see, look at that, let's, again, I don't have, I'm not a real engineer or whatever, but I actually kind of look like that, and it just seems like it's just all going right to them. And okay, so, right, so you divert a little bit into the curb and the gutter. You know, the driveways are supposed to be above the gutters. Okay, so, you know, then, I don't know, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I have a cross section of the driveway right here.
It's not a ten thousand dollar.
Yeah, and how, how your, like, when I cut a driveway and, which the permanent fees or details or stuff doesn't have some infrastructure, but, uh, the, I'm responsible for the break joint that I, I cut down, so, that, and that goes with the curb. So, sounds like would be, that would be the solution, I see, just needs to adjust the concrete a little bit to, to push it down a little more a bit. I don't know why I would have to pay that much money for that. Good, and just a. You would have to, you would have to break all that concrete up just to raise it up a little bit, just so that water.
Could be a difficult job.
Absolutely. You're gonna have to cut it.
Yeah.
That's what it costs. That's probably where the ten thousand dollars is coming from, because. My point is, I guess, I, I don't say how, I mean, the driveway, I'm responsible for the driveway, I don't, I don't make any kind of problems. No, but I'm telling you, that's what happened, was that every time they went and paved that, that street, it just got higher and higher, and it even out with the curb, so it was no.
Crowded.
Oh, yeah, like I said, I grew up there, that water used to just rush down. Eventually, a lot of it that rained on the concrete got down there, uh, to his driveway, but it didn't flood it, you know? Yeah, you see? You can tell? The highlight's important issue of how we handle water. Uh, the micro, if you touch the curb, it is soaking to the ground a little more frequently.
Okay, this picture doesn't make it look like a very bad, uh, dip, but it truly is a bad dip.
So if you look at the, the eleven by seventeen sheet, you can see the actual slope, but a small bit exaggeration because of the scale, but it gives you the idea of what the street is, where the curb is, I know this house is, it's a steep grade. And, uh, when you're doing a driveway. Yeah, there, um, when you're designing a driveway, you have, you have grade that's going into the right way, which is called the apron. And you're only allowed a maximum slope of about seven percent. And then going down, uh, you have to make sure that that slope, when you do the gradient difference, is not more than fourteen percent. And so that's why on this, I try to raise at the right way, that's where the top of the apron is, at seven percent. And it's a little bit of a curve, and then it'd have to be redesigned all the way down back to the brush. Because all that's been torn out, so if you're gonna redo the apron, you're actually redoing everything.
Entire driveway?
Yeah, if you're raising the driveway up, and then you're gonna have the rest of the driveway that's gonna be, since you raised it up, it's gonna be down here. And so you have to have it matched.
Wouldn't that bring water down to the neighbor also?
Well, I think it's once you have a puddle water in the driveway, then, because you're, you're such a very small puddle area, if you look up by the street. Because the, the rest of the driveway is, and you try to create a little sawtooth there, right?
I do not think the rest of this curb is as low as this, and so no, what you're saying, no, it would bypass until it got to another driveway that is this low, which I think his is the lowest until you get to that little street, whatever that, not libel, it was, I'm beginning to think of right now. It would go around the corner, then, like, then it goes repeatedly on its way.
If you wanna get after this, I mean, we just put a small cut in the right side of the driveway and, uh, just a little trim, so you give the water a little opportunity to soak in, and then re-divert it back out, just another cut.
Kind of like a French drain.
Yeah, exactly.
Could do that.
Ready to have this?
A French drain, it's where, um, it's kind of like you put in a little channel that has grating on top of it, that you can put inside concrete for a little patch of water and push it out to wherever you want it to go. But again, French drains, we're talking about redesigning a driveway to.
Well, I, I don't think, I don't think a concrete charge, I mean, large aggregate in there to keep the sand bay a little bit, a lot of water, opportunity to soak into the sand, like Mike said there, until you get a little bit more down grid and re-divert it back out on the street, which not gonna affect those, if you wanna take action on this.
It's still gonna be a passant in Grandma.
Yeah, let's take a trench and put an aggregate. I, I don't think my concrete sawed out, we'll take care of it.
I mean.
We can take care of it for less than a thousand dollars.
If it was my driveway, I wouldn't want it like that, I mean, having to park, park, say, a park, you know?
On the right side, you just make a small cut, the driveway took, took water to the down.
It's really actually coming in right here, this is where it's coming.
Okay.
And it goes straight down.
Oh, okay, I thought it was coming to the street.
No, no, it's, you have a street, it gets to this point, and it goes down the driveway, and then all of this turns into a giant pool.
Oh, okay, now I understand better.
By the time you hit one and one and a half inches of rain, this, or this car is in the puddle, and then the puddle's gonna be about this. But I know this, this is what happens in my front yard, only thank God it's farther away from my door. Uh, but his happen, there's his front door, so see, this is.
So you need some serious repairs.
Yeah, there is, that's why we're talking, it's so much.
Unfortunately, the foundation of that house is built almost flat to the ground, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, alright, I understand a little better now.
It's, it's just that this picture makes it look so flat. It's not.
Yeah, that cross section kind of shows you.
Yeah, this shows you better than.
So you're saying for that, that you diverted the water from this project? If you do the same thing as somebody else, as it exists right now.
Right.
So you understand the concept. Okay, obviously, the water's gotta go somewhere, so now you're saying it would just bother another day.
Right.
For sure.
You just kick in the canyon.
For sure.
Well, we'd have to watch it swarm and see what happens.
Yeah, because it would all depend on the size of the curb.
What's below that was not good enough to handle the flood.
That's thousands of gallons when you get water, water, water drainage, all the waters. You know where all that water ends up? All this water ends up right there by Mockingbird.
Yeah.
Mockingbird and Mockingbird Lake where it puddles up. And it, it, it eats everything, when it travels down, uh, what is it, libel?
It does go down.
Yeah, when it travels down libel, it eats everything up on the right hand side, you can see it where, where.
And then it turns right on to Mockingbird.
It's right there in Mockingbird, just floods everything. Kind of like the same way where Big George Vagis did that.
That then goes to Monticello.
Yeah.
Like, that is different across the way.
Anyway, so, okay, we'll be concerned.
Thank you, JR. I'm glad you brought this, because he called me Sunday and asked, what do y'all do about that? I'm like, I don't know.
Did he call you?
Yeah.
I was actually gonna call him and I, you know, it goes.
But, I mean, at least we're talking about it. You may wanna give him the news, though. I live too close, you can smash my tires.
So then, right now, no direction then for, for Pete, and then just kind of just, right now, just wait?
Yeah.
Well, let's, uh, let's try and get back to, to, I mean, if there's a little bit we can, perhaps we could go to nine o'clock, guys? Okay, or is that too long? Too long time already? So, uh, on your code enforcement, okay, you've got a forty-four thousand dollar increase or decrease. Now, I know in your, okay, in your code enforcement, uh, you actually have administrator and all that kind of fact in there too, correct? So, so some of, uh, city secretary's salary, are you in there?
It's the, um, it's the administrator, city secretary, account net, um, that, uh, factored in there.
Okay, and so libel means forty-four, almost forty-five thousand dollar increase.
Only, uh, some stuff.
Oh, um, also too, because remember, um, uh, we didn't have, they, she just started, um, she hasn't even been with us six months. So she, we actually have a position there now, which before we weren't, Eddie was helping us, so, um, he, you weren't taking off his salary at a coconut month because he's also in wastewater. So he was helping us part-time until we hired him.
But she's been here six months.
Uh-huh.
And we're a little lost.
Uh-huh.
Okay, so, so, I don't know.
She hasn't been here six months.
Oh, you just said.
No, I think she hasn't been here six months yet.
Oh. Okay, sorry, okay, okay. Well, we're gonna get the salary structure on that. You see, I saw it with a very blunt section. You got it called correctly. And then you have four rules to determine the percentage that goes from administration to there.
Yes, uh-huh.
You just estimate.
No, we, we do have a worksheet and, um.
Okay, I'm sure.
Yeah, we have a worksheet on how much goes, um, also too for public works, because they're also split, um, all of them are split on water and sewer.
Okay, uh, and then you show, um, some, some pretty, pretty good, okay, essentially thirty-three thousand dollar increase in operating revenue, uh, various permits, licenses, services, charges, other, um, can you elaborate or notice of this, I'm just pointing it out?
So on, on, on the revenue, the, the ones that we, um, increased was fees and fines. We increased from the last time when y'all had the budget, we increased because due to what we're seeing, um, on the fees and fines coming in, we increased them a little bit. And then the interest earned, um, we're getting right now really good returns on the interest on all, um, what we have. And so, um, we're actually, as you see the year-to-date, we're actually at seven thousand right now, in the year-to-date column, so we just upped it to the seven thousand there.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah.
I'm talking about the deficit numbers. Permits and licenses, you expect seven thousand less. Services and charges, you expect twenty-two thousand less. Is that what I'm reading right?
No, so again, that column right there, you're looking at the increase and decrease, right? But, okay, remember, that is going off of the amended.
Okay, once again, that's two numbers, okay, never mind.
Yes, yeah.
Turn that up there, okay? Yeah, yeah, so, okay, we're gonna waste that time on that.
Yeah, now.
I mean, if we have solid numbers, we can't really, I think, what we do is I think we cut.
The only accurate numbers that we have right now, if you look at the year-to-date, the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, those are accurate numbers right now. That is coming straight from April showing in each line item what's there. So those are, those are the actual, those are the correct numbers right there.
Okay, so, so, so that budget, then we have six more, six or seven more weeks for the year, till the year of the budget, fiscal year is?
At, at the end of September.
But, but, if you have those six, whatever.
Now, we are, um, we normally, and, and again, I mean, we can change it, but in the past, we've always done, started working on the amended budget in September, because then everything's already, you know, toward the end, and we start working on the amendments. Not the new budget, the new budget, we start from the get-go, and we start budget workshops. Um, we can change, I mean, we can change that, but we're not gonna have true figures until at closer to the end to be able to know if we're going to, um, not need any more money or need money for, depending on each line item.
Okay, so you're saying that you can, towards the end of the fiscal year, you're starting to make all kinds of adjustments.
We'll start at the beginning of September, is normally when we start with the amendments.
And those adjustments aren't made?
Well, I mean, you're, you're seeing, you're seeing the year-to-date, that's actually, those are true numbers.
Till three July?
I'm sorry?
Three July.
Um, I believe, yes, those are to the, the end of July.
Okay.
So we'll be, like, I'll be, we have an account schedule after that run, um, they'll, they're gonna be updated, so when y'all get them again, you're gonna see, um, you're gonna see different numbers on them.
Okay, so you started amending the budget towards the end of the fiscal year, right? Yeah, what you're saying?
Uh-huh.
Okay, uh, but it doesn't get amended as you go through the year?
I mean, it, it gets amended whenever council approves something for to amend the budget.
Okay.
Yeah, it gets put, I mean, into the budget, yes.
Okay.
Unless council, because I mean, we can't just amend, that's gotta come from council, so, yeah, so council, is there something that's, uh, department came to them and said, you know what, we need like a, a pump or whatever, and that's where y'all, when y'all take action, y'all say, okay, we're going to, to approve it, to amend the budget.
And it gets amended then and there? And it gets amended then and there?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so.
For that line item.
So what all adjustments are you making in September?
We're, we're going to go, because when you, um, when council amends the budget, we try to have a balanced budget for them to amend, to show, okay, for instance, um, uh, court, um, they may not need, um, for a certain line item, they may, I'm just saying office supplies as an example, they may not need all of it, so we're gonna subtract, and that's when you're gonna see the decrease. And that's how we're seeing the decrease and increase, that's gonna show you what we're decreasing or increasing.
So that's just gonna be the budget result?
Right.
Okay, so.
For the, for the amendment.
Okay, so if you anticipated twenty thousand dollars on one budget item, and it ended up being sixteen thousand dollars, you're gonna show that that's your under budget, four thousand dollars?
We decreased it by that, yes, because it wasn't used.
Okay, that goes without saying, that's just, okay.
Yes.
So you're not changing anything, you're just showing.
Yes.
Okay, we went over budget here, we went under budget here, but you really shouldn't go over budget unless you have some kind of a contingency. Okay, because we actually favor the budget to the absolute best we can, and you can't do it without council approval to go over budget.
Right.
Okay.
So all we're doing is playing with numbers.
Well, that, that.
Basically, playing with numbers.
Okay, alright, well, it seems to me we can't really get down to brass tacks until we have those exact numbers, so we can really compare. And really say, well, why do you want a hundred and twenty thousand dollars right now? Because we don't have nothing to compare it to.
Sure. Government transparency toll.
You know, we have to have something to compare it to, uh, in order to question, you know? So, I mean, you're talking about trying to decrease things and, and, and check the bare bones, and that, but you can't do that for a, for a dense of it in the current fiscal year. Okay. That's gotta be, now, so first of all, we can go back into studying ahead of time. Debbie? Mike? Uh, like I said, I did most of mine on, on, on the tax, taxing ahead of time, just to give everybody an overview of all that. You know, for example, history of our, our tax rates, that thing is really important, uh, and so, so. And then, uh, like I said, I did wrote some numbers on the airports. Like I said earlier, it's, it's, it's not good, so... So that's a budget deficit there, period, no matter how you slice it. And, and the more work we do, repairs, electric work, and all that, we already have an extra quarter pending, okay? Uh, how much was that again?
Until that number's set?
Seventeen and, seventeen and four, or seventeen and seven?
Okay, okay, sure.
Well, since it's been approved, can we count what happened to the work?
We probably can, we just need to decide still.
But it was just generic lights replaced, uh, ones replaced, why I was between the...
So, so how do we determine the amount of money from that?
Sorry?
How was that about determined? Who, who, shall we?
Well, Mickey had, no, no, this is not an electrical, we're talking about electrical.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
This is not electrical. They had the electricians go out there, and Mickey showed them, you know, to replace the lights to LEDs, and then switch out the plugs because they're old and probably burned out, not working. Um, and the wiring from the box to there.
And the box itself.
And the box itself, that's right. So that's all there really is, plugs, switches, and lights.
Oh, that was separate, that was...
Yeah, that was separate, for all three, though, that's all three total.
That was based on, and it's last week, it was based on what Joey was planning to use the building for?
No, the lights, no, this was just replacing existing lights. And it's, what he was gonna do was, in the back of that thing, he was gonna make it a whole sprayer, uh, painting.
That proposal, that proposal...
And he, that was a different...
Yeah, that proposal by me knows was completely separate of, of, that was, that was the first thing, uh, that was made.
Well, right, because I was asking, like, here, are we just putting in random stuff that the electrician might think's a good idea? Or is someone informing it? And she, she said, "Yes, Joey helped us inform that because he actually does know..."
Well, she was there too, and it was just to replace existing lights.
This isn't through, it's, it's Joey, it's just...
No, no, I know, this was not to make it his, this was just the generic fix.
Well, so, so, so we got these designers that, that we sees, and in domain, and we gotta go to fix all the electric around there.
Hold on, any airport advisory or recommendation, wait to fix the electric until we're ready. So that's gonna make the repairs. That, that, that's, that's the point, right?
But since we don't know what we're gonna have to do...
Well, we've already, you've already approved the...
Might as well get it done.
It's in the budget, it's in the previous budget, so you can also unapprove it.
I'd rather it was gonna be done, we're never gonna get this thing rented.
I, 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 you clearly guys, that, that's another point, so, but I was just wondering how it was determined.
Where the light fixtures are gonna sit, everything, is that what...
Well, the light fixtures are gonna be, most of those are gonna be changed LEDs, which is why it's never gonna last a long, long time. I think it's still air for us and all that in there.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's bad, they hate it.
Uh, but once again, just for us to advertise the thing, okay, we have to make it, you know, we gotta do a lot of the repairs. And that place is trash.
Yeah.
You know?
Let's start somewhere.
So, it's ours, we're the proud owners. So, uh, anyway, yeah, I, I think it's, I mean, it's already in there, uh, you know? I don't know, uh... Did you walk through all the electric?
Yes.
Okay, so everything seems okay to you on that?
Yeah.
As far as proposed and all that?
Yes, for the lights, we proposed to put in LEDs.
Okay, well, that's a no-brainer.
We tried to do the main room, and the big room.
I think it was, uh, six per...
Well, Joey had LEDs on his proposal.
I think that's what Joey's done, there was six, three, ten.
I thought it was, uh...
Ten.
The expensive one, or...
But not for what he was, the additional upholstery room and the, the other, this was the main hangar.
Yeah, he was talking about just hanging, hanging the LED lights, which almost anybody can do, you know, just buy them and do them.
But, so, if you, Pete, go ahead, call guy, guess...
I'm saying we can do everything with them. You know, and make sure that they, they, I mean, I don't trust anything. You know, it's just that, you know, we need to wait to see if there's some other way we're gonna try to enhance that building, or, or subdivide it, or whatever. You know, we may get, you know, once we make it presentable enough to put it in ad, okay, according to what App said, then we can, you know, if you got a client come in, like Mickey said, you know, we can enhance to their needs. And hopefully, they get paid accordingly.
Their needs, like the new rental house.
But right now, we are no less, okay, this doesn't include the, the fuel farm cost. Uh, okay, there's gonna be debt service, sorry, because it was capital outlay, but we still spend, we still spend two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars on the fuel farm. Okay, that isn't making money. And, uh, so we will lose no less than sixty thousand dollars. And that includes if we rent those three hangers for thirty thousand dollars a year. I think I factored in, I think you mentioned, try to get twenty-five hundred, fifty? I mean, uh...
Well, thirty thousand on the one, thirty thousand on the one, that's at twenty-five hundred, yes.
Yeah, so, so I, I put it on the three, so, so if you can get more than thirty thousand on those three hangers, and that would cut in, so you're assuming it'd be over fifty thousand. That's...
Well, the, the way I had figured it was just the hangers.
Well, you're paying...
The A had had three hundred dollars, and then twenty-five hundred for the cat.
Yeah.
And yes, that would be thirty-six, thirty-seven to a year. So, which would actually make us, we need to pay, the hangers would pay for the loan.
Uh, not exactly.
Yes, it would. If they were all rented, if they were all rented, it would make eighty-three thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars, if they're all rented.
Okay, it's five thousand short, okay.
So, payment was eighty-two thousand dollars, and next period is eighty-one thousand dollars.
But you gave me eighty-eight payments, eighty-two, including interest and principal. Eva still, one ticket. Uh, but then, okay, so then you still have your, your, your airport maintenance, you still have your, your venture?
Yeah, it's not paying for, if, 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 for the loan. And that's how we got the loan, was saying we would rent that hangers to pay for the loan. But that's how we went through this.
The loan was pledged by, by taxes and, and revenue.
Yes, but when we first started talking about it all, I guess we have to go back a minute. They told us, "You have to have some way to show us you can pay for this, and it would be on the rental of the hangers." And purely, we can, if we do it. Now, if things have changed since then, maybe I'm not aware of it.
If you get twenty-five hundred dollars for the dig, so, and then again, we're gonna add on the amount of money we're about to spend. Uh, you know, and like I said, the seventeen thousand for electric that we just spent is not included in here. Uh, so, uh, so we have a serious issue with those hangers. Gotta make the best of it. There is no, there is no magic bullet. Silver bullet, whatever you call it. We're scheduled to return next season, correct? Okay. Well, once again, I, I hope, uh, you know, we, we step back two or three agenda for, for so few steps in time, and we'll try to do the same next week. Okay?
Good.
So, you know, that's something, somebody really, really, really wants some. Okay, let's try and, let's try and, you know, you think you have those numbers up there by next week?
For the amendment?
Uh-huh.
Um, I'll try, I'll, I'll start with them.
Cancel meetings, we don't, just remember, talk...
Uh, just don't post it.
Okay, I, not that I'm supposed to be talking to anybody, but we're just talking in circles.
Yes, we are, just, just, so, so you can't project how it's gonna end. You don't have numbers to project how we're gonna finish this for you, that, that, is that?
Let me, let me go, let me, let me see what I can do for you.
Okay. Yeah, we gotta find, gotta find a way to do it on this. But we still, according to Melissa, we still have ample time for what she needs, okay?
So we need the department hats to seal a payment of them.
Yeah, send them back to Joey with, yeah, and then maybe the state, state somewhere. All righty. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion, ma'am.
Oh, wait, wait, we still have items, we still have the quarterly report.
Oh. Do you do quarterly investment reports?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I got this one, uh, hopefully, it's... See, here's where we're going with that.
Do we just, we're, are we, we, we get it right?
I'm sorry?
Just showing the notes.
Yeah, just for review, yeah, that has, it has to be reviewed by council.
I sent that to us yesterday or today, right?
Um, we sent it on, um, yesterday.
Right.
Yeah, and it's just for review.
Do we have a paper copy?
Um, it was emailed to you.
It was emailed yesterday.
Yeah, so we don't have a paper copy?
No.
Oh, yeah, so...
Okay.
Um, on the cash flow at the bottom, there are two numbers, what's the difference between those two numbers?
The two numbers, if you look at the top, Stacy, you'll, so you'll see where, um...
Oh, the dates?
Ending, uh-huh, three thirty-one, and then this, the other column is ending six thirty.
Okay, great, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Let me figure it out.
Informational and...
No, no, just review, that's all that has to be done.
Okay, guys, we just need to review, any questions? Any questions on quarterly investment report? We just need to review.
Yeah.
Okay, informational items, if you've got any?
Um, I'm repairing the, uh, plans and specs for the vein loan, and we should have those ready to go to bits next week.
Was it the vein ones?
Yes, the big pile.
So that's the one we had, uh, table for you?
Yes, yes.
Okay, and then two bits on it? Great, let's get that moving. And then, and then once again, guys, this reaffirm, I'm supposed to be at the next, uh, next school meeting, should talk about the work, so...
Ah, man, last also happening, yeah.
Yeah, so, it's Monday, so hopefully...
Selling good, they're gonna be...
Yeah, yeah, I will, hopefully.
They're gonna think that, yeah.
And then I think this Friday is also a community pep rally for the, uh, start of the school year, the sports teams, the band, uh, and all that. We encourage everyone to attend, uh, six, six, I mean, it's gonna be, it's six or six thirty, something like that, it's at the football field. So, I know that, done it before, uh, they actually, they invited me to speak, and I'm like, "Well, I guess so." So, I get to stand on track, and hear a crowd, and be talking a little bit, I guess. So that was short of the speech. But anyway, I just tell everyone, you know, uh, you know, the school, obviously, is a big part of our identity, so...
Does the school start on Monday?
Oh, okay. Really, no?
Mike, what does school start?
Next, Monday. The next week on Thursday, Thursday, Tuesday, Thursday?
Pretty sure it's the twenty-third.
So it's the same day as a school meeting?
Well, we started as a Wednesday, and it starts the meeting.
There you go, all right. Okay, anything else, guys? Yes, ma'am.
Um, he, he picked up the banners, um, um, do you all, do you all want him to start?
Can I, can I start pretty, operating?
The chamber asked for, okay, this is in city, this is, uh, the chamber asked, uh, if, if...
Call city?
Well, the city could get them up before school started.
Okay.
She thought it'd be a great, great thing with all the extended traffic, the road traffic, for everybody to see that, because they're coming and going for school.
All right, we'll get on that.
You'll be able to do it?
Yes, you're gonna do it safely?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Start our motion on table.
Do you have two, Jerry? Second?
I'll second.
All right, we're done. Good evening.
So, Stacy?
Stacy, you're different, flip your head, different.